Our esteemed department said. Um, just know that we, the commissioners have a book and we're looking through the book and it isn't that we're not. Looking at you or listening to you, but sometimes we have to put our head down to take notes. So please, you know, know that we're all here and we're all paying attention to everywhere you have to say. Um, I guess we could wait a couple more, another minute or so for Darius, but otherwise I think we should. Get going. We have a lot to cover.
If worst case, you can always hop back on the later date, just watch that couple of minutes he missed.
Sure. Oh, there's Darius. Hi, Darius. All right. So. Um, Steve, do you just want to announce the agenda? Who's going in what order? I'm going to pull mine up on my phone. My second computer isn't working, so. If you can just say the agenda that, did you send it or did Brian send it?
Brian, Brian sent it.
Did Brian sent it? Right? Okay.
Right. So you want me to do that now? So the first, uh, first is business development tourism. Second arts commission, third. Health administration. Then the library, historical commission, redevelopment, TNP, code enforcement. Economic and community development, and then P and Z rounding it up.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so we'll do a bunch and maybe take like a quick break sometime between seven and seven thirty. Just for the commissioners, but for all of you out there, just so you know, we'll take a quick, you know, five, 10 minute break at some point in the middle of this. All right. So then, um, are we ready to start with business development and tourism?
Steve, do you, do you want me to start or do you want to find the page first?
Yes, well, we'll find the page. Good idea.
I think it's, Steve, I think it's like page one thirty something.
Uh, ours isn't organized that way, unfortunately.
Yeah, we have to look under the tabs.
So yeah, so Tammy, it's, um, E four. Starts with E for business development and tourism.
Thank you so much, Jack.
Do you guys see the, like, the screen should have been?
Yeah, Steve, I think if you, Steve, I think if you search for special events, it'll pop up.
Yeah, in the screen, we'd like to get it out here. All right. Just a thought for next year, we should put the letter of the page on our agenda. That way we don't have to waste your time. Anyway, okay. Go ahead.
Alrighty, so you'll see two requests here and a third one that has a zero dollar request. Um, just because that's being funded through ARPA, so I'll start at the first one. Um, this is a request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this year and recurring until twenty twenty eight. Um, in the past year, we had the holiday events that were very successful in the city. I'm sure a lot of you attended them. Uh, one was in the Wall Street geography and one was in, um, South Marwack at Fish Fifty Washington Street. We're looking to continue those events which costed us about, um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then we're also going to use the additional funding here, the additional thirty thousand dollars plus some small business and main streets money that we have that Jessica will mention. Um, to support these events going forward, but also additional events like a Halloween type event. Um, farmers markets and potentially some spring kind of first Friday events in the city. Uh, previously it was paid for by the Norwalk parking authority. Um, so we're looking to continue its success by funding it again through the capital budget. Um, do you want me to stop here? Do you want me to keep going and then take questions at the end?
Um. Whatever. If the commissioners have questions, might as well ask them while we're on the same page.
Sabrina, I, I have a question. Um. This looks clarity to me, uh, like an operating expense, not a capital expense. So I'm wondering why it's in the capital budget rather than the operating budget.
Um, we were advised to put it in the capital budget.
Hmm. By whom?
Jess, you want to take that?
Yeah, of course. So we presented, um, to and talked through with, um. The CFO's office and I agree with you Lou that I think that it probably is an operating expense because it's year after year. Um, and we have a few of those, um, that you'll see through the capital budget. So. It's definitely a discussion that we're more than willing to have with the mayor's office and with the CFO. Um, I think that it definitely is one of those reoccurring items and, um. It is more of a hard cost as opposed to, um. A soft cost, but I do believe that, uh, which is why I think it ended up in the capital, but we're definitely willing to, to talk through that with Henry in the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a good question, Lou, too. And, uh, these special events, this. Your, these monies are not going for things like the play, paying the police to be there or anything like that. You're like buying things or. Renting things, that, that type of expense.
Yeah, that's going. Yep, it's going towards, you know, providing the staff, um, renting the, we had a carousel last time. Um, the holiday decorations, like the tree that was there, those types of things.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I can add to that too, a little bit. We're also looking at, um, having some. Volunteers help out as well. So for example, for the Halloween event, we thought that each business and each person could carve their own pumpkin. And then we can collectively bring them to one spot and all set the, and then set them up. So we're looking at not only renting, um. Some items for these events, but also having the city participate from a community level on being able to kind of decorate the main street or, or be active. Um, with the events themselves, which we think will save a little bit of money.
Okay. Um, question, so, um, for the decorations such as pumpkins, will that be recycled through compost?
It sure can be.
Yeah, I believe so. Um, I believe so, but it's something that we would need to work out with TPW.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. We like that. How you about pumpkin recycling because, um, the community center has the, uh, curbside compost. It's one of the two places in the city, um, on Highland Avenue. And it sounds like such an awesome idea and pumpkin are actually food, but anyway. The amount of pumpkins that we got for the recycle in the last two years were overwhelming. We normally have five of the big totes for the compost and we needed to have eight additional totes. And these are the big hue, you know, the big, really big recycle bins. And it goes on for weeks. Um, it's kind of like Christmas trees. Everybody seems to get one and then every. They all come in from different places and, and getting rid of them is actually. A big expense and challenge. That, I just, I mean, I'm all for the recycling, but I just want to say, be careful what you say you're going to do, ladies, uh, because. It's a huge thing. I say, bring your pumpkin and take it with you.
That's very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay. Please continue.
Sure. So the next one is an arts and cultural plan. You'll see that this is a reoccurring project. So we have received in the past fifty thousand dollars. Um, it wasn't enough to cover the cost of the plan. Um, we needed an additional thirty thousand dollars. We asked other municipalities how much it. Costs them to do a plan that we were looking to do, um, in a similar realm. And the eighty thousand dollar amount was pretty consistent over the three communities. So we put that extra thirty thousand dollar ass to cover the difference. Um, just a little background, um, just to give a little. Um. Bit from the last time I presented on this and some of you are new. Um, so the arts and cultural plan will not only be a guiding document for the arts commission and arts and culture in general in the city. It'll specifically be focused on the city as a whole, but also hyper focused on the urban core, which, um, we're actually working on right now to establish an arts and cultural district. Um, so it'll basically outline kind of programming and planning and, um. Specific installations and where we should be allocating our dollars towards arts and culture in the city. Um, so it culminates all of those things and hopefully will at the end of this process have actionable items, just like our P O C D does. Um, and really tell us where we should be spending money and prioritizing that in the community.
Okay. Okay. No questions?
Awesome. Um, and then the last one you'll see is zero dollars, but just to flag it for you guys, we're currently funding the Kiva program and micro grant program through, um. The ARPA dollars that are available at this moment. Um, so once that funding pot, um, has ceased, we'll probably be coming back in. For an ask in the upcoming years.
And so these, how many micro grants does two hundred and fifty thousand dollars get you?
It ranges, so we're making guidelines now to make them more firm, but we, in the past, we've done five thousand dollar flat grants. Um, so it would get a significant amount of businesses with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, however, we are now scaling that. So if you have a storefront, you might be given some more funding. If you have more employees, you might be given some more funding, but we're not giving more than like ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so you're looking at, you know, a significant amount of businesses with this. And previously we had partnered with the chamber where we had some operational costs tied to this. Um, but now we are taking all of that in-house. So all of the funding is going directly to businesses through ARPA and through what these capital funds would be.
And do we give preference to Norwalk business? Like, I know all the businesses are in Norwalk, but to residents. Who want to start a business, Norwalk residents, starting a business in Norwalk.
So yes, we get, we give priority on a variety of things. One is, well, you have to be a Norwalk business, of course. You can't be, you know, somebody who's in Hamden, but then has some operational operations here in Norwalk. If you don't have a physical footprint here or physically working from here, you wouldn't be eligible. Um, but additionally, we prioritize if they have a storefront, if they have a solid business plan. Um, what they would be spending the money on, those types of things. Um, we take a lot of things into account, including the educational background that they've received from one of our partners. Um, and there's a review committee that actually kind of allocates the funds that are professionals, not only in. Different types of business, but also our advisors and things of that nature, so that it makes sure that we're, you know, giving the money out where it'll be most impactful.
Thank you.
Yep. And that is it for me. If there's no questions. And then I have the arts commission next. As well.
That's E six. Steve, thanks for putting these up. It's helpful if we can't find the page right away.
Steve, if you type in like public art, it might come up a little bit easier. As public art inventory is on there. So if you want to put that whole thing in, it'll come up, but public art should be close. There we go. Perfect. Alrighty, so the first ask, um, is for an increase to the fifty thousand dollars that we normally ask for, for the art and public praises program. So in the past, um, we funded a few murals in the city. You've probably seen the stair mural, um, in MLK. Across the street from the train station. That's one installation we've done. There's another installation on the, uh, pumping station down off of kind of where. MLK turns into kind of Wilson Point area at that juncture. Um, we also have in the pipeline right now, the Monroe Street underpass, um, which is. Obviously on Monroe Street, kind of in between the police station and where you turn for the train station in that area. Um, and then additionally, the reason why this request is a lot higher is because we're trying to tackle the West Avenue underpass wall. Which is around, I believe it's around twenty thousand square feet. So it's a huge space. Uh, the going rate for that, um, is twenty thousand dollars. We asked a muralist to give us a roundabout price. That's on the, our arts commission. This is what he had given us. We're hoping that we will be able to get a grant for half of this amount. So hopefully the ask will actually only be a hundred thousand dollars, but we won't know the results of our application. Um, until we submit, which that submissions do February seventeenth, and then we'll probably have a month or two until we know if we'll get that match or not. But the two hundred thousand dollars covers the whole project cost at this point in time.
I'm sorry, could you, which underpass?
It's the West Avenue, uh, wall and underpass is across the street from the art park. It's where the vines is installed currently between the mall and Matthew's mansion.
So it's under the I ninety-five?
Yep, it's at the, there, I mean, there's. Two of them are underneath parts of I ninety-five, but the middle wall is the real chunk of it and it, there's nothing there. It's just a empty wall.
With that spaghetti yellow stuff?
Yes, I also call it the spaghetti.
Everybody knows what you're talking about. Okay, so it would go on top of that wall that would that art come down?
Yes.
The yellow?
Yes.
Okay. And just curious, who decided to take that down and put that, do this instead?
You guys, do you want to take that? There's a little background with the redevelopment agency there.
Yeah, so we've been working with, um, we've been working with the arts commission and also the redevelopment agency to be able to remove that, um, and move it somewhere. Or find a new home for it where it's a little bit more suitable. We're finding that the wall is, um. Discoloring and some of the vegetation is growing over the top of the wall and it's really hard to see where it's high up. So we have yet to, um. We have yet to have a plan of where we will be relocating it and we have yet to have a plan where we will be placing it. But, um, with the timing of this grant that's available through Bloomberg Philanthropies, we want to be able to make sure that we're moving forward with that.
Okay. Do you know, did the city pay for that yellow? Art?
The redevelopment agency paid for that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And, and will you be put, will there be a selection committee for artists who want to participate?
So we have already completed, um, a selection process. We had. Over eighty applicants. We put it on a cafe website and we share it with our local artists list and they all, um, submit to us. And then the arts commission as a subcommittee of that commission review all the proposals, they pretty much, um, mess it down to, to two or three. Those get reviewed a little bit more, um, intently. And then there's one that's presented to the arts commission, which is actually happening tonight. Um, at six o'clock, so I'm jumping from this to go to that. Um, but there, we've done this now three times. So we have a significant inventory of artists, both local and international, which has been really exciting. Um, the group that's actually been chosen this time actually met. Each other through our last submission. Um, they weren't selected previously, but the art, two artists met and they collaborated on the scrimmage in this time. So we're really excited to see kind of what they produce and it's going to be really, really amazing stuff.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
We see that wall as a gateway for the city, you know, people who are coming off the exits for the highway and people who are driving through Norwalk are going to be able to see it. So we really want to do something special there.
Anybody else? Okay.
All right, the second one here that you'll see is the public art inventory. Um, this was kind of tabled last year, was on his way to get funded, um, but then was deprioritized. So we actually took that time to go out and solicit, um. A group that does the national archives and does many of the major museums, uh, throughout the nation. The company that archives kind of everything that we see, um, on the user facing end. Um, so we reached out to them. We explained to them how many pieces we have currently in the city, both sculptures, the W P A murals. Um, all the new murals that we've installed, anything that's been donated to the city in the past. Um, we kind of explained to them that we don't really have a significant inventory that we currently have. They'd basically be starting from scratch. There was an effort done in twenty seventeen by a volunteer on the arts commission, but it's not complete by any means. Um, or digitized in a way that we can actually know what we own. Um, so if you didn't know, the city's, um. Public art collection ranges over kind of a lot of different institutions. There's some of our pieces in the transit district. There's some of our pieces in the historical society building. There's some of our pieces in the train stations. Um, there's some in the health department basement. They're kind of scattered everywhere in either in storage or displayed. Um, we, you know, if we really sat and took the time, I don't even think we'd be able to kind of categorize all of them and know where they all are at the moment. Um, so we wanted to take somebody in, not only to do that and digitize it so that everybody knows where everything is, but also to have a team value all the pieces that we own. Not only to see how much we have in assets, but also to be able to provide insurance for those pieces. Um, especially when we're doing more outdoor installations, we want to make sure that we have, um, significant insurance enough to cover what we own at the moment. Um, we don't have any evaluations of really any of our pieces that we have. The W P A murals is adding significant cost to this. Um, you need a special assessor to really look at those pieces considering their historical value. Um, so about, uh, about forty thousand dollars of this is the W P R murals kind of putting that into perspective. Um, and then the other twenty thousand is really just building that inventory and digital, uh, digitizing it. And the hundred thousand dollars is for that assessor to assess everything else that we own, um, in the city, all of our other pieces. Um, so we're really excited about it. I think it's super important, especially when we've had, you know, pieces get damaged in the past and not had funding to cover it. And when you reach out to our insurance company, they always ask us, well, you know, how much is this going to cost? What is this worth? Um, and we really don't have an answer all of the time. We look to the artists if they're still alive and around, um, to be able to respond to that. And eventually there's just going to become a time where we won't have that access. Um, so it'll be important to have something like this so we can properly ensure all of our pieces and make sure we know the value of what we have.
How this one, it's a, is it a firm you're hiring? Cause a hundred thousand dollars is kind of like a whole study for planning and zoning year long. How long does it take?
And how many? Yeah, it'll probably take at least six months to just be here and inventory the pieces. Um, and then putting that into a physical database, they do it on the fly as they're here, but also to make it easier accessible in the backend is something else that they'll be doing to be able to integrate it. Into our current websites, not create anything new, but integrate it into what we already have. Um, so they told me the process can take anywhere between six months to a year. Mainly because we don't know how much we have. I know we have over, you know, four hundred pieces in the city of Norwalk, but. Locating them, being able to value them all, they really weren't comfortable giving me a significant timeline. So they said anywhere from six to twelve months, but they said mostly in the first six months is when you're really like, they're here, they're seeing where all the pieces are and they're valuing them in person.
And this wouldn't include anything at Lockwood Matthews. This would just be in city. I mean. The city owns Blockwood Matthews, right? But it wouldn't include inventory in that.
No, it would be, no, it would mainly be like our. I don't think it's going to include the mansion or the library. They get separate donations than we do. Um, so this is really just our murals, paintings, sculptures that we have in our city facilities and that are displayed throughout the city.
Okay.
Sabrina, I'm sure it wouldn't affect the cost in any way, but in terms of the location of the W P A pieces. Um, when the transit district installed theirs, um, they put together an inventory and it's in, um. Uh, the book that the, the district had printed, uh, about the W P A pieces. So it may save you a little bit of time.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Anything that you know of that I could potentially use is great. We do have what the volunteers did, um. In twenty seventeen, which has a good chunk of them. There's obviously new stuff that wasn't added since then. Um, but I think it's going to help them along to move along the process and hopefully save us some money as well.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And then the last but not least is the public art maintenance fund. So as we're installing these murals and getting new sculptures for the city. Uh, we wanted to create kind of a fund just in case something were to happen, something were to get damaged in their interim. Um, some of these pieces that we are getting to do need to be maintained, whether paint starts peeling or a brass sculpture needs to be polished, those types of things. Um, so we're going to cap this fund at thirty thousand dollars in its entirety. Um, in the past, when we've repaired things, it's only been about like five thousand dollars here, a couple thousand dollars there to get the artists to come back and kind of repair what's been damaged. Um, so we think ten thousand dollars is a significant amount of a number. Um, and we're not going to go any more than thirty thousand dollars in that account ever at any point in time, because. You know, unless there's some catastrophic disaster where all of our pieces just get damaged all at once, we don't think that we would be spending that thirty thousand dollars or even coming close to it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Sabrina? Okay.
Uh, just one.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of the public art inventory, will the consultant be helping us with like a storage plan or strategy?
Yes, so the actual inventory won't only just inventory all that we have. It'll locate all the pieces and then suggest if they should be placed or stored. And where they should be stored and how they should be stored. So they've done this hundreds of times, um, and that was part of their proposal that also kind of. Made me know that they knew what they were doing. Um, they suggest all of those things, the appraiser that they come on, that they get on board has done like almost all of the national archiving. So, um, they really have a strong team and a strong kind of background in all of this.
Alrighty, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess that's it for you, Sabrina?
Yes, thank you so much. If you guys have any additional questions after, feel free to reach out. Always happy to chat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, then health administration.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, Deanna.
Hey.
Just get to that page once, yeah, let's just keep going down after E seven, after F. Okay, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much. So for those who don't know me, my name is Deanna Diemore. I am the health director for the city and, uh, we have one request. Um, that's within our, um, department to go over today. Um, it's upgrades to our security system. Um, just want to note that I'm also joined today by Neil Ranny, who's the city's property manager, as well as Carla Rodriguez Alicia, who is our health operations manager at the health department. So they, um, uh, had a big help in putting this request together and figuring out, um, where we want to go to make improvements within our building. So this is a request, um, that's related to the P O C D, you know, continue to update, modernize and maintain Norwalk's infrastructure and city facilities. Um, you know, our current security access program system is, it's very outdated and under, um, Neil has advised us that we need to update it. We need to update the technology. Um, and we're also looking to, um, install some additional doors within our building, security doors that will have power assist operators. And we're really trying to, this is part of a multi-year effort that started years ago and the city has been, you've been supportive, the city's been very supportive in getting us. Additional funding so that we can increase the security within our building. Um, we're looking to, you know, create more privacy spaces for our patients and our, our clients who are waiting. You know, we're a public building, but we do have several, uh, services that are, are, you know, for patients and, and privacy is involved. Um, and so I'm just going to pass it on to Neil to see if he has anything he wants to add to explain, explain this.
Thank you, Deanna. So like Deanna was saying, both, uh, the access system and the burglar intrusion system are antiquated. You're probably back from the eighties. Uh, so when we're trying to integrate any new controls, we don't have the ability to expand off the system. And the system itself is, uh, the technology obviously has changed over the years, so it's no longer compatible with the new technology today. So we're looking to replace both those systems, uh, which have a, a pretty good cost. The, uh, uh, access system is tw- I think. Two, excuse me, one second, let me just look at my numbers here. So our access system is twenty eight thousand dollars right now and the, uh, the intrusion system's like ten thousand dollars.
Neil, yes, I have, I have no, no, no problem at all with, with the request. I'm just wondering, why isn't this under your budget?
Well, you know, there's, there's a couple of reasons. It's, it's, it's program related. It's a program request. Sometimes it, it, we feel sometimes it could be served better by the, when the department, uh, puts it up versus sometimes it gets lost in our, our bigger projects. And sometimes, you know, when we prior to prioritize everything, sometimes it gets shifted down a little bit versus a roof that's leaking. Or heating systems are not working, it gets really buried at the bottom of the list. So this way it can kind of get pushed forward.
And thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Thanks for putting the proposal behind it. It's always nice for us to, um, have that information.
Excellent.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great evening. Bye now.
You too. All right. And then we go to the library, which happens to be the next tab in our book.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Sherelle.
Feel a little guilty here. Everybody had so few and we have so many. But we try to keep ours down within the previous year, so this makes up for it. So, um, our first ask is for ADA compliant doorknobs. Um, just because our, our being library, um, we have the regular turn knob, which is hard, you know, for people to maneuver if they have some sort of handicap. Um, our South Norwalk library does have the correct doors, but our main library does not. Any questions? Or should I just keep going?
Oh, that request is just for the main library. And you, you submitted, um, some revisions, didn't you?
No revisions for, for, well, I did, but I'll get to that.
Okay.
So the, so the, thank you, Jackie, though. The only revision basically is for the sono exterior lighting. That's going to go, and Neil just jumped off, but that's going to go in. That's going to go, and Neil just jumped off, but that's going to go in Neil's budget. So we took that, that was, um, I believe number five. Uh, we took that out of our budget and that will go into Neil's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. But thank you for, for, for bringing that up. So any, and I did send the visual so you could see the differences in the, um, doorknobs. Okay, shall I move on?
Yes, please. Thank you, unless anybody else has a question.
So, thank you. Our next, um, ask is for a library van and that's something that we did ask for last year. And, you know, our library, our van is like sixteen years old. It's getting to the point, you know, where we have costly repairs and, um, so we, we, I, I listed three different types of vans. Last year we did ask for the, the high roof van so the guys don't have to bend and, you know, hurt their backs. So I, so I included last year's, um, request because, you know, the dollar amounts continue to go up each year. So I did include last year. Um, this year I included three quotes. One is for just a regular van, um, you know, gas run, not high roof. The second is for high roof van, um, that's gas run and because the city is moving more toward electric. The third is for, um, a high roof electric van.
Sherelle, who maintains, uh, your vehicles?
Um, the city fleet department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I, the reason I asked, uh, uh, the, the, the question frankly is, um, and I have no objection to this, but, um, I favor having the city, um, maybe DPW, uh, do all of the vehicles throughout the city, um, in one bid, but uh, that, that, that really isn't too relevant to, to whether we're supportive of this.
And we did go through the city and that's how we were able to keep the, the cost down. So the city did help us with that, the fleet department. They did help us, um, you know, with the state contracts.
And is this one van the only vehicle that the library has? All the libraries, that is?
Correct.
Right, so it, it services both South Norwalk, Main Library, et cetera?
It does. Yep.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so our third request is for an ILS system. And for those who don't know, when you come into the library and you're searching, um, for a book by name or by subject, um, that's our system. And right now we, um, our, our system is twenty years old and anything in technology that's twenty years old is just, is antiquated. Uh, we're at a point where they've had two major upgrades, um, that we did not, you know, put in because we've been trying to keep our costs low. But we're at a point where we have to because they're no longer, um, supporting upgrades and things like that. So we're at a point where we really need um, to upgrade our system.
This is a very modest upgrade. Compared to a million dollars server that's one of the tech departments asked for.
Well, I'm glad you think so because we definitely need this upgrade so we can, um, you know, and it has, you know, some nice perks with it as well. Uh, for instance, right now, if you search, uh, for a book, um, you'll, you know, you'll get the book title, but right now just say if there's a movie or something else, it's, um, a book on CD, all of those will come up in one. So you can see the different formats as opposed to just one format at a time. But the biggest thing is that we'll be supported when it comes to upgrades.
And is the server housed in-house?
Our server is housed in the fire department.
Okay. And can I just ask, in your alignment with the P O C D, this says assist the Fairfield Makers Group and/or similar makers organizations, artisans operations, and so on, to move to Norwalk Center. Can you explain a little bit about that?
Probably not the, the right one. This is basically to keep the library operating. I'll have to, um, thank you for catching that. I'll have to correct that.
Okay, so that does not apply to this.
This is basically to keep, you know, our major service, um, operating, both, um, for the public and for us behind the scenes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for catching that. So I will correct it.
Okay. All right, then I'm going on to the next one.
Okay, I believe that's the, I just want to make sure I'm not out of order.
Oh, integrated library system upgrade?
That's the one we just did.
Yeah, it's a Norwalk newspaper.
Thank you. So this is, just one second, sorry, I think I'm out of order. Okay, so this is, so we've done this in the past and right now we're just missing the years nineteen seventy-one through, uh, two thousand and six. And what the, um, digitization does is it allows, um, you can search for this from home. So just say, um, Jackie is looking for, you know, how much her, her home cost now, just, you know, whatever. Um, she could actually search for that, um, if it's in the hour. You don't have to come in. There's no microfiche and that crazy stuff that we dealt with in the past. Um, so we're just missing, um, those critical years and we do get quite a few, um, inquiries, you know, from that, from that year. And once this is completed, um, well, the whole hour will be digitized, digitized.
So this is a continuation from last year, right?
It's been like five years.
It is, and this will be the final.
And was, was this, did you collaborate with another department for this? With historical or, um, preservation?
So in the very beginning, we did, and I'm not sure if Patty is on.
Yeah, I am, I'm here.
Oh, okay. So Patty can give you some background?
Sure. Uh, under Mayor Mosher, there was a special, uh, uh, ad hoc committee put together to talk about the future of the Norwalk Museum and, and part of it was the, uh, city's archives were at the museum. And the ad hoc committee, uh, recommended that the archives, the appropriate place for the archives is at the Norwalk Main Library. And so all of the city's records were passed on to, um, to the library. And beginning then we were working with Yale to, uh, get the older newspapers, um, the, uh, Sentinel and, oh, what's the other one? Uh, Sherelle?
Um, it was the Sentinel. Let's see, what was it?
Well, go back into that.
It was also.
Right, and, and those were all done, uh, initially. So this is the last piece. And, uh, we just feel that there's so much focus right now on people wanting to be able to search for, uh, information that is fifty years old. Well, this is what we're talking about is getting us current. So from the seventies forward is what we're trying to do and then this will be the end of the project. And rather than doing it piecemeal over the next five years, we just felt that this was a wiser decision as we're having so many, um, requests for this feature at the library.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Once this, um, information is in the system, if you will, what do you do going forward? Does the hour provide any service? Is there a better, easier way? I mean, I, I, I've been doing this planning commission capital budget for at least six years and I think this has been an ongoing project the whole entire time. So are you going to wait twenty years and then somebody else is going to ask or, or can we, you know, load this in as we go along now?
This, this is the end. These are the missing pieces. So going forward, it'll, it'll automatically be digitized, but this, these are the missing pieces from the past.
Okay, so who does the digitizing going forward?
There is a company, I just had it here.
It's a news bank.
Your book, news bank, yes.
And they, they will be doing that. So every year though, you still will be requesting funds for that?
Well, we're hoping not to. If we can do all of this at once, there's a cost savings of roughly six thousand to do it all at once. Um, if they can do it all at once, we will. If not.
I'm sorry, that's not my question. Going forward, after, like what happens from two thousand and five to now and from twenty twenty-three forward?
So tho- mo- those are already done. These are just, these are the missing pieces right now. Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, I'm, I'm sorry I misunderstood you, but yeah, the, the others are already completed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so Jackie, to your point, we did have the Sono Library exterior lighting in our budget. Um, basically because our, our entrance, our main entrance is on the side, it's near the driveway. It's not the front, you know, that's lit up. So, um, you know, it's a little dark back there. We have twenty-two spaces, um, twenty regular, um, spaces in our parking lot as well as two handicap. And then we have five spaces across the street. So roughly we have twenty-seven spaces for staff and patrons. And just because, um, of where our entrance is, it's a little dark. Um, so we thought we needed an, an upgrade. So Neil took that on. He's making some changes to, um, our existing lighting and he will add lighting, but again, that will come from his budget. And Neil is with Guardian, our building management company.
Thank you, Sherelle.
Yeah, you're welcome. I just want to make sure that mine is the same as yours. Okay, so then the next is, um, our, our carpeting, um, and this is just for our first floor at the main library. Um, the basement is fine. Um, our top level is fine and we, maybe three years ago, we, we did our auditorium, but right now our carpet, um, is just, it's dilapidated basically and it's unsafe. We have several rips and tears and different places. So for safety, we would like to have the carpet replaced on our first floor. And I did send pictures for that.
You got estimates on this?
Um, yep, Neil did the estimates and, um, so to change the carpet and to move the furniture that, um, can be moved, that's not, you know, um, that can be moved, that was ninety-five thousand. If we want to go under the stacks, under the book stacks, then that's the additional time. Okay. And then our next is um, our adult reading room. Furniture right now, we, you know, we have several, um, seniors who use our library and we have chairs that are, that are not comfortable for them to sit in. Also, you know, many of them need the, um, the arms, um, to lift themselves up and, um, we just thought we would make it a comfortable place for anybody, but particular for, particularly for our seniors. Yeah, so we're getting there. So a business center, and I'm sorry, I think I'm out of order. Give me one second.
Business center is.
Okay, yep, I see this. Thank you. So the business center, um, we would be able to, you know, partner with our business and entrepreneurial, uh, community. Many, you know, people are working from home these days, um, you know, a lot due to COVID. Um, but then we also have a lot of entrepreneurs and they look to the library to enhance their business needs. So, um, we currently offer our business and nonprofits, um, research assistant, assistance through their programs, uh, for programs, um, and workshops, um, and database assistance, but we like to outfit, um, an area in the library with physical hardware that would allow them to help themselves. And, you know, many, not that, you know, we want a copy, but many of our libraries in our surrounding towns already have business centers for their residents.
Is this like copy machines and printers? And what, what exactly is it?
So it's copy machines, printers, it's, um, shredders, um, scanners, this, most things that you would find in a business center. And I think that was also in, in the, um, and so it's like a scanner, um, heavy duty, excuse me, heavy duty shredder, laminators, um, industrial booklet stapler, large format printer, um, chairs, tape dispensers, mat, um, tape, um, staplers, just, you know, paper pencil sharpener.
So do you intend to supplement the cost with revenue by charging for usage?
We had not thought to do that. Um, just because it's a, a free library. Um, I'm not sure other towns are charging. If it's something you'd like for us to consider, we can si- consider it, but that's not something that we thought to do.
A nominal fee might not be a bad thing to keep people from, uh, be, taking advantage of it, you know, ten cents a copy or something. I mean, I know that's a pain to administer, but I know the Roweaton Library, they, they charge for copies.
We do, we will charge for copies. That, we, we do already. That's an existing, uh, process. So we charge ten cents for black and white and fifty cents for color.
Okay, well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so, um, the next request was for, um, outdoor furniture. Um, initially we did, um, we, we had thought to, um, work with the, the Wall Street Committee, um, the, um, transportation, mobility and parking, just so we could have a coordinated look, but just, we thought we would put it back into this year's ask just because of COVID and people are just using the library differently. Many like to use that, the outdoor space. So, um, so we're requesting, um, for, for outdoor furniture.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to make sure that I can follow in your.
I think that's it.
I think that's it, yeah.
Since the pandemic is over, so to speak, have the numbers of patrons, you know, increased back to the pre-pandemic level or what, what are you seeing happening in general?
It's moving up. Initially it was slow because people, a lot of people weren't sure that we were open, but now the more that the word, um, is getting out, we're seeing the, the increase.
Okay, and you get a lot.
Amy, I'd like to go back to the last item, uh, the, uh, outdoor furniture.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it in the, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, I see it in twenty twenty-five.
We did push it out and that's what, we would like to move it to twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so you want us to consider that?
Please. And I did mention it to finance, but at some point they had to cut everything off, so they, this, it didn't get in in time, but they're aware.
Okay, and, and so overall, do you have any rough, like what percentage of age groups use the, 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 uh, Main Library and/or South Norwalk? I don't know if you lumped them together.
Um, I can get that to you, but I, I can say that with the main library, um, quite a few elderly.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if I had to guess, I'd probably say maybe sixty percent.
Seniors, seniors and forty percent non. What about, do kids from McMahon and Norwalk come over and use the library?
They do.
Yeah. Okay, they don't just stay in their own school libraries?
No, uh, we have, um, a teen librarian, Lisa, who goes out and makes sure that we have that partnership. So even, um, you know, if people are coming to, well, Main, you know what, I'm sorry, she does that with the middle schoolers. Um, I know we, we do have, um, high schoolers come in, but more middle school.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Sherelle or, um, uh, Ms. Presha?
Uh, no, but thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Always nice.
Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Well, have a good night, everyone.
You too. All right, so, uh, the next is the Historical Commission. And we have to, that, that one. Uh, it's E five in the book. And who's here representing the historical commission?
I, I'm here to represent, uh, the Lockwood Matthews Mansion. And I know David Westmoreland normally presents this, but he is in Panama. And was, I saw an email that he was on a ship and they had bad internet. So I don't know who from the commission itself is coming, um, to, to present. But, um, I am prepared to talk to you about the, the Lockwood Matthews Mansion portion of their budget. Because we, we obviously fall, fall under, under it. Um, so, uh, I know that quite a few of you are aware that this has been an ongoing project, uh, since two thousand and eight, uh, to bring the mansion up to a, a physical, uh, mechanical level where we have heat and electricity on floors other than the first floor, uh, that we use and so popularly. Uh, so we currently have thirteen and a half million dollars appropriated between, uh, the state of Connecticut and the city of Norwalk for this project. This, uh, we are, uh, in the, in the planning and actually, uh, out to bid currently for this project, uh, which we have anticipated would be about seventeen and a half million dollars. Um, we have thirteen and a half already appropriated in, in the last two or three budgets. So, um, with the inflationary factor and getting the rest of the money that we need, we're asking for the four million five. Uh, these are, uh, estimates from professionals. We have, uh, three, uh, architectural firms working with us. Cause as you all know, the mansion is, uh, uh, very special, uh, national landmark. Uh, but the construction is, is extremely complicated to handle. So that, um, over the last two years, we have expensed, uh, a million three, a million four, uh, on, on the planning and design portion of the, of, of the project. We went out to bed late in the, in the, the late fall and, um, we didn't get a lot of bidders because of the current situation in the economy where there's so much work going on in Fairfield County. That, uh, a lot of the bidders, uh, were busy with other projects, potential bidders. So we are, we restructured our, our packaging to try to entice, uh, a broader group of potential contractors. This is strictly mechanical. So it's a heating system to replace the nineteen sixties system that's in the building. Uh, electricity, fire suppression, IT, uh, some minor plumbing. Um, and, um, it's not, it's not, uh, any restoration. No decorative, uh, aspect, uh, uh, of the needs of the mansion are included in this project. We had hoped to be, start construction January one, um, but, but we now it looks like we'll have at least a three, three to four month delay. We are opening bids, uh, on February thirteenth. We've been working with the city through this with, uh, Sharon, Sharon Connors and Alan Lowe. Um, we work with the state of Connecticut on a basis for this project. Uh, we meet every Monday for an hour or two with, uh, the state, um, economic development commission and with preservation. So it's a very detailed, um, uh, in-depth project. I don't know if you have any questions on it. Um, I, our, our, one of our architects is on board here. I, I see him online. Uh, Robert Cavello, if we have any technical, um, questions that need to be answered.
I, I have a technical question. I see the construction involves remediation. What's the timeline on that?
Well, it's a small amount of remediation. Hi, again, my name is Robert Cavello. I'm the owner's rep, uh, for working with the mansion. Um, the background of myself, I've done a lot of work for the mansion over the years and city projects. I have forty years of experience as an architect and a project construction manager. Uh, to answer your question on the, on the, uh, asbestos remediation, uh, because of the age of the building, there's really very little hazardous materials in the building. It's all prior to, uh, uh, choosing items like, uh, asbestos. But when we did do, uh, some added changes in the thirties and forties, there's a very small amount of asbestos in the basement that needs to be remediated. It'll be done in, during the beginning of the project during our demolition phase. It's very small amount.
What about lead paint?
Uh, there is some lead in some of the paint. And where, uh, again, we're not doing a lot of removals of wall finishes. We actually were avoiding that as much as we can. So it, it will be extremely limited and be handled case by case. Um, well, go ahead. I'm sorry, Jason.
Yeah, okay. So will this all take place? Was the timeline on it? Are we talking about one year?
Uh, we're, we're hope, we're anticipating the project from, if we were able to start in May, it's a sixteen, eighteen month project.
Wow. Will the museum be in use?
No, we will vacate the museum and this is, this is.
I'm laughing, I'm, I'm laughing, yeah, because, uh, we have to move out of the museum, out of the building.
Wow.
And so we have to move into other space and to be very creative in order to carry on our programming, especially with the, with the school program, uh, that we have, uh, with our school kids. Uh, and right now we have a trailer that, uh, we were packing today, uh, along with a dumpster next, next to it. So we're physically, uh, in the process of, of moving out. It's very complicated. Um, we are required because we're a national landmark and the preservation issues and the easements that go along with that historic easements. We have to, uh, uh, keep and preserve and protect any, any, uh, fragments of the building, uh, that have been stored in the basement and our city property. Uh, and so most of the trailer that we, we, uh, loaded up today are the original sinks, some of the original kitchen cabinets, uh, door frames, doors. Um, just heavy, heavy stuff. All of that will be, uh, the, the trailer is at the mansion right now. It's going to be moved to the south lot, um, during the project. And then we are interviewing and engaging other movers. Uh, the storage, the moving and storage port, portion of this, uh, project is between five and seven hundred thousand dollars.
So it's not included in this cost?
Yes, it is included.
It is, is it line itemed out?
Yes.
For this.
Between the summers in the state and some.
I don't see it here.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's part of our overall budget in the seventeen and a half million dollars.
Million.
Oh, yeah, I should hope so.
Yeah, yeah. There's also, and as, as Patsy's alluding to, there's also an extensive amount of, uh, protection that needs to be put in. Prior to the start of the work, you know, that, you know, when, when we all build and do renovations and standard commercial buildings, we, you know, you have temporary protection to, to protect and the existing finishes. But everywhere we churn in this building, it, we, we have a, a, uh, irreplaceable, uh, piece of either woodwork or, uh, marble work or plaster work. So there's an extensive, uh, protection plan that has been put in place. So when our contractors come on board, they, they will be able to work freely without, you know, fear of damaging some of these irreplaceable, um, uh, finishes. So that's, that's some of the challenges that we have for this project and been.
Actually, an interesting point on that, uh, we went, uh, several of us went to New York to the Frick Museum, uh, a year or so ago. They're, they're under an extensive re- restoration and their architects invited us down to review their protective, uh, process and program. So we've spent, you know, a lot of time and energy, uh, doing that. And, and just as a plug for the mansion, if you haven't watched the movie that was filmed there a year ago, um, the, it called The Harrigan's Phone, Mr. Harrigan's Phone. I, I really ask you to go on Netflix and, and view it, even if it's just the first half hour. Because the, the, um, views of the mansion and especially the flooring, uh, is just absolutely amazing, um, because we took up the carpets during that and, and, uh, sealed off the floor. But you get a, an amazing, it really is what's there. There was no props that the movie did. It's the real mansion. So if you haven't seen it, it's fun and it's wonderful for Norwalk.
Patsy, will you be able to, uh, expense this, uh, full four and a half million dollars during the twenty-fourth fiscal year?
We believe so. If, if, you know, when the bids come in, um, in February, now, you know, in two weeks, three weeks, uh, we'll have a better idea. That, that's our plan. Cause we have to move out. We're in the middle of moving out right now, as I said. So, uh, that is the plan. So, and Doug Hempstead is the current chairman of the board and he's here too. So, um, I don't know, Doug, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, um, well, the answer to Mr. Schulman's question too is we, the city, the city is handling it through the purchasing department. And underneath the guise that we can't sign a contract without the money in place. Cause it's, it's, so that, and answer your question is that we couldn't even sign a contract without the money being in, in place. Um, I, I think what Patsy, uh, has been involved with this for so long and, and been a, a missionary for this, but also what this does is helps the ability of the mansion to be able to be more self-sustaining because this will now allow us to be open three more months, three and a half more months of the year and be able to take in revenues, um, with the archive areas that is something that attracts preservationists to the place. And look in our, our guys, we, we have a, uh, an education room planned as part of one of our, um, alternates that when you go into some museums now, you have a, a place you can sit down, do a video, somebody can do a small lecture. And we can do some, um, um, possible, um, parties. And we're not saying parties for us, may able to rent the space out for people who want to have certain events, uh, at the, the cellar level where the archives are and the bowling alley is. So there's a lot of revenue potential that helps make this a very viable, um, and hopefully enjoyable. Um, once we're finished, because the, the items we're doing, believe it or not, is not the bling. It's the necessary parts of the body that keep it operational.
Yeah, and I, just to jump in on what Doug said, that was extremely important. Both the state and, um, the city, we've, um, organized a different drawdown on money between the, the state and, and the city, uh, taking turns. And, uh, both entities require that we have all funds appropriated before we can sign any construction contract. So our hands are tied and we have already, uh, bonded or, or in the budgets thirteen and a half million. Any other questions? Do watch that movie for me.
What is the name of the movie again?
Miss, Mr. Harrigan's Phone.
Harrigan's.
Yeah, and Donald Sutherland was the lead, uh, actor.
Thank you. Is your last piece of the puzzle this four point five, right? I mean, cause.
Well, it's the last piece for, for mechanical. There is ongoing restoration. For instance, we have, uh, another a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we have been, uh, awarded from the state just to restore the front doors. And one of our trustees, it was a matching grant and one of our trustees is matching the state funds. We're in the middle of, uh, getting ready to write a, an additional grant, uh, request for a half a million dollars for, uh, uh, you know, additional pieces to the, uh, but the mansion as far as the restoration part of it is always going to be an ongoing challenge. Uh, and, you know, we're doing piece by piece by piece.
And just, just to expand a little bit on the mechanical systems, it's, it's also life safety. Uh, we have a entire new fire alarm system, a new, uh, fire suppression system, uh, that is needed. And it was also desperately needed is, is a, um, a wifi and, and technology package. That's all included in helping in the operation of, of these systems and for the museum.
The functional part of it, yeah.
So there's, there's a lot of, you know, moving parts to the mechanical systems that will, will enhance the operation of the facility. And make it more cost effective to run, quite frankly, because of the system they're using today is so in, so out of date. And it's, uh, not very efficient, so, or have more efficient systems.
Tammy, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, thank you. Thank you very much and, uh, continued good luck with the project. And, you know, thanks for doing all the work that you do to preserve the history.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So then.
Who do we talk to now?
I don't know. Smith Street Building is up next.
Believe PMP.
Hi there, um, it's Jessica. So I think, um, David Westmoreland usually presents the historical commission budget to you. As Patsy said, he's in Panama on a boat without, uh, wifi. So I had just asked Steve if, um, if, uh, it would be possible in, um, Tammy, if it'd be possible to push this to Thursday where we could, um, connect with David or if we could have Dana Laird, the chair of the historical commission, come onto the call and be able to present these items to you.
Um, are, do my fellow commissioners, uh, feel comfortable with that? We could have, take these next items and move them to Thursday?
Uh, I, frankly, I just, as, as soon ha- have someone come and deal with it at the end of the meeting. Uh, Thursday is going to be pretty jam packed as well.
Yeah.
Well, I just soon finish it this evening, but.
Well, um, is somebody going to be able to?
No, I'm, I'm still on with them.
I can, um, I can work on that to be able to try to get someone to join us at the end of the meeting. Um, I will send a few emails now and try to have someone from the commission join us.
Okay, I mean, maybe we could shoot for, um, around nine o'clock. We have quite a few other departments to go through, so I'm just trying to, you know, who are you going to find in the next hour and a half?
Um, yeah, let me try to work some magic and, um, hopefully we'll be able to get someone for you.
Okay, very good. And you can feel free to interrupt us at some point and just bring your hand and say, I have somebody or I can't find anybody, so. Okay, thank you.
So next is redevelopment.
Right, that's F. I don't know. Um, it's E-seven in the book.
Evening, Brian.
Hey, good evening. How are you? Nice to see you all.
Evening. Good evening.
Are you guys ready or you want me to wait? Are you at the page?
Hold on. Oh, yeah, I've got it. Thank you. Does everybody else have it? Yes.
I'm ready.
Okay.
All right.
Hi, please, go ahead, Brian. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So, uh, good evening. Uh, we have two items before you tonight. Uh, I'll start with the first one here. Uh, references urban core infrastructure. Um, what this account essentially served and has served as in the past is sort of our, our fund for pre-development planning and the cost attributable to that. So the most recent use of it actually exhausted those funds, um, around the South Norwalk train station where we did the TOD planning effort. And I know a number of you were involved in that. I'm really trying to take a look at the infrastructure in the area and help us do some comprehensive planning attributable to the development projects. So not necessarily the development projects themselves, but, you know, a lot of questions come up during the pre-development phase that, you know, the city wants to have information to make informed decisions. And, and these funds are typically used for consulting services in that regard. So we have two very large projects in the works right now. I'm sure some of you are aware. Um, fifteen seventeen Chestnut Project, which is, you know, well planned, but we actually received a six million dollar grant for infrastructure. We want to make sure that we have enough, you know, adequate resources, uh, to impart some of the design services, although some of it will be funded by the grant. We do anticipate some, you know, questions coming up and some improvements that may be of interest that are actually outside the scope of the grant. So we want to make sure that we're, we're prepared for that. And then also looking at connectivity improvements to the Webster Street Lot project. So we're in active negotiations with a selected developer, um, for that. So we're in active negotiations with a selected developer um for that site. And we want to make sure that we have the, you know, pre-development resources to help make sure that we, you know, fully think through a, you know, large two hundred fifty, three hundred million dollar project that's being proposed over there. So that's what the two hundred fifty thousand would be used for and is is being requested.
So just to make sure I understood you. So most of this two hundred and fifty request is for a study for the Webster Lot?
It's for consulting services. So some of that will be studies, other will could be design costs, and that's what we probably the more majority of it will be. Um, because we're concurrently also putting together uh grant applications and a lot of that, we need to do our own sort of design and development work. Uh, to put forward, you know, more detailed drawings and just the concepts we have out of our planning work. But I think to answer your question directly, the the majority will be used more for design cost and some for planning.
And I mean, this is going to be a private development that's going to do the project, is it not?
This will all be attributable to public infrastructure and not exclusive to that development. So looking at say we have, you know, fifteen seventeen Chestnut and the Webster Street Lot, obviously, the developer is going to be responsible for whatever, you know, planning and and design that occurred on their site. But the connectivity improvements, things that link the public, um, but you know, between the development projects that go above and beyond the scope attributable to the, you know, just the one specific development is more what these funds are typically used for.
Okay, and I just saw relatively recently that the city received some grant money from the state and the state considers the Webster Lot blighted. Would you agree with that or was there a reason? I I mean, I personally don't think it looks like blight. It's a parking lot and it's paved and, you know. Can you talk to that?
Yeah, so the funds you're referencing are from the Brownfields program. And through many legal actions over many, many years, it it's made a very general definition of what a brownfield is. And one of those terms is blight, right? So I think um that's probably where you're picking up on that word. What the funds were actually used for is actually just that has some sort of status with EPA or deep. That was identified through some sort of environmental assessment. So that's just one component of uh what would go into what is a brownfield.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I I was insulted when I read that. I thought, how can they say that about the city? I don't.
Yeah, I think it's just more of a generality, you know, that looking at at the state level, and I think it probably gets a little loosely applied.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions um for Brian on this?
I I do have a question. You said that you received a grant?
Yep. Yeah, so that was actually other work, you know, I know Jackie, we've worked on the community advisory committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a six million dollar grant for infrastructure improvements around the South Milwaukee train station.
Right.
It's kind of broken out into a few different pots, about five million um for actual infrastructure, so sidewalks, streetscapes, paving. All around Monroe, Chestnut, Henry. Um, and then also sort of funds for additional facade improvements in the immediate area around the train station for homeowners.
So I see you just have this twenty twenty-four targeted. What about the twenty twenty-five and twenty-six?
We, I mean, we anticipate having, you know, the funds we're requesting, requesting for design, so the implementation dollars are already there, so we don't really see future years. At at this time at least, you know.
Right, so this is one shot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, please go on to the next one, Sono Wharf Harbor Loop Trail, if that's.
Yeah, great. So I'm not sure if many of you were involved in the planning work we did. We engaged Weston and Sampson over the past year. Um, to take a look at the Sona Harbor Wharf, it's that area over there on water and Washington Street, it's the parking lot by the aquarium. And you know, with the Walkbridge project, there's going to be significant modifications to that site and wanting to look at it as an opportunity to increase waterfront public access in the area. So we went through a a relatively extensive uh planning study with our consultant. We have a design that's been, you know, well agreed upon by city staff in the community um in terms of a concept. What we want and what we're requesting funding for is to actually advance the design portion of that. So really taking the concept to permitting. And then hopefully positioning it for state funding, either through state or federal funding, either through the Walkbridge project or through other federal sources for transportation, infrastructure investment. And they're really looking for, you know, much further along design plans. So what we're trying to do is actually take these all the way to about ninety to a hundred percent design, so that we're most positioned for funding. So it's not just the park, it's not just the parking concept as well as part of this, as part of our planning work, we actually looked at two trail sections along uh one thirty and one forty-eight East Avenue, which would complete the har- you know, significant portions of the Harbor Loop Trail. So these funds would also be used to, you know, pay for those design services to get them to the same level that we could try to pursue uh federal and state funding with. Um, and and that would be, um, yeah, the three fifty isn't the total. We're actually expecting about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of design cost. But the agency, and it's a previous capital account for waterfront public access, has about two fifty, three hundred remaining. We're waiting on the final um cost from the uh the forty Cross Street section that's been actually pretty well built. To understand how much we exactly have, we're confident with the three fifty we're requesting, we'll be able to get the design done on all three of these segments.
All right, and when when will the the design concept be available for public viewing?
So the design concept's available now. I'm pretty sure it's on our website. If not, I can make sure I could get it, you know, a link to it. Um, but we went through a number of public meetings, a kind of, you know, really worked with the community to determine what is the, you know, the best design. And I think, you know, the outcome is is pretty exciting. I think it's a really nice, you know, use of that space. Um, while still preserving some of the functional elements of it in terms of parking and um access to the aquarium and also the the trail. There would be a trail section that would actually go behind the aquarium too, as proposed. So I can get it for you, Jackie. Uh, that would help.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
You can also see see the other commissioners as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Brian, um, years ago, redevelopment would come to the planning commission and give us sort of updates and what was going on and um, I correct me if I'm wrong, don't you receive other monies from uh somewhere else besides the capital budget? And can you just explain that to the other commissioners? Because we might not all know exactly how redevelopment works.
Yeah, so we have a number of, yeah, of course, no problem. So, yeah, and I'm happy if there's ever a need for updates or whatever, I'm happy to schedule a time to come talk with you all. But in terms of uh our our revenue streams, I mean, we receive money from a number of sources, either some of the discretionary grants that we go for, you know, have some sort of operating capacity. Or capital improvement dollars, you know, for instance, we receive funding from D C D um to do three, actually now it's about five million dollars to streetscape improvements around the pinnacle development site. I'm receiving two grants, one from D C D O P M. So to answer it, you know, most simply, we're funded by some state resources. Um, and it's just going to be depending on what grants we put in for. I think when projects become locally identified or generated through the strategic plan that we did with the city or the planet conservation and development, where our offices, you know, trying to pursue those products, that's when we come for the city capital resource. And finally, we get C D B G, you know, some some funding from C D B G. And then there's some deferred revenue from redevelopment projects, the the, you know, the city, um, I mean, the redevelopment agency has done in the past. That helps support operating costs is less capital.
So um because I'm not necessarily knowing the initials of all of those places where you received funds. What percent comes from the city and what percent comes from the state or the feds, if one of those was a federal thing?
Uh, if I had, you know, I'd have to take a if I had it from the, you know, off the top of my head, I would say twenty to thirty percent comes from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And would that include this grant request that you're asking for now?
This would be, I mean, this I I'm more referring to our operating revenues. I mean, these direct costs are project specific, so I I would have to look at our capital account, you know, we're what these really are generated from is is sort of, you know, we serve also as additional staff capacity for the city. So some of these are implementing things in the planet conservation and development um that we're we're serving in the staffing capacity. So towards the capital budget, I mean, all of our capital budget is obviously city money. Um, but in terms of investment, I would say maybe a little higher on capital projects, maybe about forty percent comes from the city, but I, you know, I'd have to look into that a little further.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I think what we've done over the years, I don't know if you're familiar with the strategic plan that we did is when I came in and when Jess came in, we really sat down and it took an inventory of all the projects everyone was interested in. We've said, okay, which one's the city's responsibility, what's the RDA's responsibility, which one is both of us, who's going to be the lead? We developed this really, you know, exhaustive list that's available for public viewing. I'm happy to share that as well. So you could kind of see the where the money would be going that you guys are investing. It's it's directed, you know, city benefits.
Yeah, I think I think it would be great and maybe Steve Kleppen can put you on the planning and zoning. I'm not the chairman of the planning and zoning. Uh, I defer to Lou, but it's nice to have an update every, you know, once a year, just so we know what's going on and how is it interfacing with other projects that are brought before us.
I'd be happy to do that. I think one nice starting point would be the strategic plan. I could walk you all through that.
Yeah, do you like that idea, Lou?
I think it makes a lot of sense. Once we um have a slowdown in our business. Um, you may not know, Brian, but our last meeting ran seven and a half hours.
Oh, wow, it's a saga.
Yeah. Anyway, all right, well, it's some, you know, it could just be a brief, quick overview, a couple of slides. Here's, you know, some things that we did in last year and here's what we're hoping to do this year. I don't think.
Absolutely, whenever, whenever you like.
Well, we'll have, we'll have Steve contact you to set something up.
It sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay, so the next is uh, transportation T M P. Are we up for a break? What? Are we up for a break? Oh, I was just seven. I mean, if you guys want to, fine. If not, maybe we could do it. We'll need it after this. I I would prefer to do it before this. I have not had dinner. I mean, I come straight from the office and I sit down and like Lou said, seven hours, that's crazy. I'd like a break. All right, well, I I'm happy to um do what JJ wants. We have Jim and Garrett both smiling away, but let's hang on for Jackie.
No, please, Jackie, go, go get something to eat.
Better mood. Thank you.
We can do ten minutes, no.
Eat, have a glass of wine.
Five minutes passed.
I think we found somebody from historical too, so.
Oh, great. All right, thank you. So five past seven, we'll we'll pop back. Sorry to get you queued up and then ditch you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
We appreciate.
Okay. Uh, we have all of the commissioners and uh we have you guys. So um I don't know if we need the thing put up on the board. We have our book, so um is everybody ready?
You know what? Let's 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 have it put up uh.
Oh, right.
There there are at least a couple of, there's someone from the public watching. They may have access to the book.
Thank you. And and we also need Steve, I believe, to start recording.
Yeah, we're recording. Just give me, why don't you guys start and I'll get the get it up there. We go.
Thank you, Steve. All right, so uh Jim, please take the floor.
Sure, this one is, Steve, this one is still on the historical commission.
What just happened?
You know, we gave the guy a week off to go skiing and he just can't do anything right.
Um, yeah, E three. I just.
Ah, there we go.
There we go.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Jackie, I hope you had a couple of glasses of wine.
Got some yogurt, that's it.
That doesn't sound as fun, though. Um, okay, so the first one is uh two, I'll I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible since there are a number of items on here, but you certainly uh we can elaborate on any of them uh as you see fit. Uh, the first one is the roadway design uh construction is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this allows us to address uh you important transportation improvement projects throughout the city, uh those.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Jim.
This one's five hundred.
I'm saying five hundred.
But you're five hundred. I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I my my apologies. See, I'm the one that needed to have the glass of wine. Or maybe, so yes, I I'm sorry. So this one is is five hundred thousand um to address uh transportation projects throughout the city. Um, this also allows us to start to develop plans and and allows us to be responsive when grant opportunities uh arrive, right? You know, the grants, you you know, they come relatively quickly and we get competitive when we actually could be you you where we could show some design plans. We have spent in uh you the time that we have been with the city, you know, with 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 uh many community groups talking about, you know, issues in in neighborhoods. We've identified a number of projects that we think are in line with the next round of funding that should that should be coming available. Those include a, you know, investments are in around the hospital, right? So we're looking at Stevens at Stewart Street Intersection Improvements. We think that this that that this is really right for, you know, a community connectivity grants uh that 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 will be uh made available um sometime uh this year of what we're hearing from our friends at DOT. Um, and we have some some general concepts that we've spoken with some people in the community. But any of our concepts, as they go to advance with you, as you, as many of you know, would be really our requirement uh making sure that really public participation and the neighbors and community members alike are participating in the process. We also have um the Gregory Boulevard roadway improvements around the cemetery. We've been working with some designs around that. Uh, we may have an opportunity where if we could actually provide some designs, we can actually get that funded by a another source. Uh, and those would largely be some safety improvements as we're seeing some higher crashes coming uh in those and then really some complaints of speeding. Um, you know, we we looked at again, safety measures at around Fitz Street um a- and Strawberry Hill Avenue. So we we have identified some intersection improvements that can be made there. You know, Richards Avenue at West Cedar Intersection improvements, you know, and some interest, some some roadway improvements that we see really in line for Richards Avenue over there, that has a really aging infrastructure as regarding to the traffic signal. Now, we either can replace the traffic signal in there or that we think that this is really ripe for a roundabout opportunity uh to 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 you better move traffic, but also you maintain speeds that are, you know, better, you know, around our community college environment. Uh, and we also see some opportunities to do that uh along Richards Avenue as well. Um, you're Ponus uh Avenue at Ledgewood Drive. This was really called out to us by a resident who lives on the street that has a hard time exiting the street safely. Garrett and I took a drive up there, saw exactly what he's talking about. You know, there are some, you know, there's some some obstructions in the way that it's built today. Was so we see some, with some minor improvements, we can make that intersection much easier, much safer for our neighbors there. You know, Geneva Road Traffic Calming, you know, Geneva Road, uh for those of you familiar with it, it you it's really challenging. There's some sections that's super wide and then other sections go down to be super narrow and then other sections go back to be super wide. Uh, you know, and when we heard from people, we just, you know, we we continually heard for of challenges. We did some traffic studies out there. We we saw those. We see that there's some opportunities there. Um, you know, Ruby Street and Gold Street is another intersection uh that needs improvement. Um, and the Soto Traffic Study, which we identified in, you know, in our narrative here. You know, that's really an opportunity to finalize uh two grants that have been waiting that we could, you know, we could advance uh those, you know, one is about two point two million dollars. The other one is 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 is, you know, roughly around two. Uh, so we we really see that we could, you know, improve uh some livability as as well, just position the city uh really to 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 take advantage of some some grant opportunities uh that are out there. So um that's that that was really what we see for the for the roadway design and for every construction uh section. Um, did you have any questions or do you want me to just run through? You'll interrupt me or?
It just one for me, Jim.
Yep.
These designs are done out of house, is that right? Like you guys don't actually do all of these designs?
So we do some smaller ones. So we have a transportation planner that 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 city's employed. That actually gets us some of the first levels that, you know, as they get further advanced, they need to be into an extra external firm uh to, you know, for the level of complexity and, you know, signature sign off on it. Uh, but we start a lot of these initial designs in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the next one is uh traffic signal equipment. Uh, so I think you've, if you've seen, uh, you know, the past year. Uh, we've uh recently, you know, been awarded two grants to further our traffic signal modernization, upgrading uh you of a of a traffic signal. What, um, we see this as an opportunity. Uh, you know, this, this is uh less funding than we've asked for in previous years. Um, because, you know, the traffic signals are wildly expensive. Uh, but we are able to capitalize, you know, what we really see is an opportunity, our desire is to really get the North Avenue at Camp Avenue signal um modernized. Um, because we have the one further up, we got a grant to do the one at Main Street. That would be the only signal in between that remain, that that that's 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 old. But it's also right by a school, right? And we really, we we're very important, we think it's very important that we, you know, really make investments around our schools. You know, that really benefit the neighborhood, that allows people to to walk to school um and just to get around the community. But, you know, that that one, you know, we believe that we jumped this one down to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because we think that we could fully get the signal operational there. Uh, because it would be span versus a traditional master.
Uh, Jim, uh, general question, uh, I I I ask this of DPW as well. Um. Would, would it make? Would, would it make sense for you to put on uh, a, an additional staff member or two as um, a way of doing more of this work in-house? Um, would there be a cost savings in doing that?
So Lou, honestly, you know, so, I, I, you know, A, um, you know, we, we, we do have some openings, uh, as we, as we just right now, we have been, you know, uh, for the greater part of a year unable to, to fill, uh, a, a, an engineer position. Um, and effective Friday, Mike Yosek is retiring. Um, so, so that'll be another resource that, you know, that we lost. So, so I think there, to answer your question, A, I think it's pretty challenging to, to get those people today, right? But also the, the really, the, the true benefit of what you got, get out there in, in, in having external firms do that, you know, work with us is um, the myriad of people that you get to, to support the project that we, you know, it's not just one person's, but it's a hundred people behind there that gets the best design. It really is looking at safety. That's really, you know, but also can move the project in a, in a faster manner. Um, and really, you could, could, you, is, is that person that, that you're, or that group of people that you'll get to work with us as we engage the community. So I think that's really a huge value for the, you know, engaging some external firms um, to get it out if we really want to be the best city.
Thank you.
Um, the next one that we had is the Gregory Boulevard at Fifth Street, Marvin Street, Cat Pasture Beach Road Intersection Improvements. Um, you know, that's, this is on the way to the beach, you know, one of the best assets I think that we have going. Um, that intersection that we have is a pseudo roundabout. Uh, last year, you guys funded a portion of it. We are, you know, we've entered into a contract with VHB to, to work with that. This, this, uh, uh, request that we're ha- asking here is only a hundred thousand dollars and it's allow us to finish the design. Um, even without that, you know, having, having the fact that we entered into the agreement with design, we were able to apply for lots of grant. We've gotten some conditional approvals. We just have to, one of the things that were, that was noted in our, uh, application process is that our road classification that we keep internally in the city did not match that of DOT. And since DOT is the funder, we now have to, we have to change the classification within DOT so that we can make that grant eligible. But that is really going to open up about, you know, what, what we're, we're anticipating, you know, being about 1.6, 1.7 million dollar grant uh, to, to create the, the, the improvement set that we're bringing forth, uh, here, right? So this is, allows us to finish the design plan. Um, the next one is new sidewalk construction. Uh, so for those of you who have been on Highland, uh, recently, we completed those sidewalks this year. Uh, we still continue to hear many positive comments that come from the residents, but it also gave us an opportunity of really seeing what the cost for construction is around the area and, and, and what we can get done. So we got it done. Uh, nearly about a mile's worth of sidewalk out of that for this dollar amount. So, um, you know, we, we have many of the other, um, opportunities to, to uh, to, to, to get some sidewalk installations going, uh, in, in particular. One of, you know, we have also started to wrap up the 2022 Transportation Master Plan. So that's coming to a close. We did the last public meeting, uh, several weeks ago. Um, but the, I think from my, my perspective, I think the disturbing fact in there is when we did the 2012 Transportation Master Plan, we identified George Street as a street that needed sidewalks. And in our 2022 Transportation Master Plan, we identified George Street as a street that needs sidewalks, right? Um, I would like to not put our 20, do George Street on the 2032 pro- program. Uh, so we really would like to, to make sure that we started addressing some of those and, and I could tell you that when we did some drive arounds at Halloween, that street just really stood out to me because they had a tremendous amount of kids walking with no sidewalks. Uh, so we really, you know, that became, you know, I, I think some of the guiding thing that we really wanted to do and make sure we took care of that. So, uh, that's the new sidewalk installation. We just also, I think this year finished a sidewalk, a complete sidewalk inventory. So we now have a, a, a complete inventory of where all of our sidewalks are, where all of our walking paths are. So we have the ammunition to, to, to make some good decisions going forward for the investments of sidewalks. And and I could tell you, it is probably one of the most, uh, common requests that we get in T M P is for, is for sidewalks.
Yeah, and, and just to, just to add to that too. So some of the findings from that assessment where there was 280 miles of roadway in the city. So if we were to have sidewalks on every road, there'd be 560 miles, but where the city stands today is there's 189 miles of sidewalks. So we have a really big task ahead of us. And those sidewalks too are also in various states of condition. Um, some of them need rehabilitation. Some of them need, um, complete and total repair. Um, so just to reiterate, there is a, a very large demand for this, these types of projects.
So next, moving along is traffic system enhancement, right? So, um, so we have about 90 signals that we are responsible for in the city. Some of these signals are older than 30 years old, which is where, where we have been making an investment into modernizing those, either with city infrastructure investments, or more importantly, what we have been able to, to get with, uh, some, some grants to make this happen. But this is also, this, what, this allows us to keep those existing older systems at a state of good repair, making sure they, they remain functional. Uh, this is the, your, this is up the, the detection, uh, that we put up the battery backup. So you're largely some safety improvements, uh, you know, or in, intelligent transportation system improvements uh, that we, that we can make for, for this relatively small investment. Uh, the next is Seabview Avenue.
Quick question, Jim. Are you seeing any research, um, that indicates like there's more conversation about roundabouts and maybe not putting stoplights versus four-way stop signs to cut down the number of stop actual traffic lights? Are, are you seeing any research that's heading in that direction? For a town, Norwalk City Town type environment?
So, so, so we've had a conversation with the administration. I think we've had started having some conversations with some, some community members. I think what, you know, what you saw with our requests that we have for this year is, you know, the request to really formalize a roundabout at Gregory at Fifth, right? You know, uh, we think that there's a huge benefit in that one. We, we also, when I talked to you earlier about Richards at West Cedar, that's a signalized intersection that we want to remove the signal and replace it with a roundabout. We also have about eight other intersections, you know, throughout the city, we, that we think are really great candidates to remove the traffic signal, remove, you know, the, the, the traffic control that's there, replace it with a, with a mod, with a modern roundabout. You know, that, that we believe and data supports, you know, well, is, is, you know, is safer, you know, accidents are less severe, you know, they, they, traffic still continues to move. Uh, but we, we move it at a slower space, slower speed, sorry. Um, you know, and really create safer. So we're looking at each inter- intersection, you know, with a fine tooth comb and we do an analysis. You know, anytime there's a traffic signal, it does have to be federal guidelines. So we do an entire signal warrant. Uh, and in fact, when we looked at the Wall Street design, um, you know, and we'll talk about Wall Street in a little bit. Um, uh, you know, really great project that I don't want to steal any of that thunder, but we are taking a signal out there. So we are, we are looking at each of them individually, you know, I, you know, there, there are a lot of money, right? And if we could defer those costs and move it on to something else, we would, we would really greatly do it. There are some times and they're really important and they have to be there, right? And, and it's a safety factor, but we take, you know, are, you know, we have, you know, on, you know, this last year, we've adopted, you know, we've moved to the Common Council to adopt complete streets legislation. Um, this week, we're meeting with a consultant who's working with us through that and for our first kickoff meeting that we'll have, and we're going to start some community conversations about that, but that's our pathway to Vision Zero. And everything that we've done is, is really about creating, uh, safer roadways. Um, you know, this past year, Condot just announced that they had the most amount of pedestrian and uh, deaths on roads, uh, in, in, in our history. But we are really happy to report that for the, for the last two years running, we've had zero. That's unheard of in a state that, that, that is seeing, you know, 35% increase in, 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 in fatalities, right? So we, we have a good story to say and we're, you know, that, you know, we don't rest our morals on that. Uh, we want to make sure that we, we maintain zero and we, and, and we'll look at, at every avenue to make that happen.
Thank you.
Sorry, I could talk for a long time on that. I get a little passionate. I have to remember to shut up. So the next is Seabview Avenue Improvements. So that was partly funded in a number of years ago. Um, and, uh, the money had been, you know, out there. We just, uh, had our first kick, uh, community kickoff meeting where we're really looking at redesigning Seabview Avenue, uh, you know, for, you know, from 136, it's going to be all the way going around to, to New Street, our First Street. Uh, so, um, um, you know, we're really excited about that, but this, that, you know, this, um, your vast, uh, amount of, uh, of, of, uh, 550,000 dollars rather, uh, will, will allow us to, to work at finishing design. We put a, uh, I'm sorry, a hundred thousand.
This one's a hun-
I was putting vision, I, I, I need, I have a, other account, so my apologies. But you'll also see in some outlying years in 2026, what we put in there is, is a number that, you know, we think maybe, and, you know, this, we, we feel very strongly, this is a huge opportunity for, for public fin- financing, for grants. Um, and this would be a match, should a match be required. So we started to fill some, some really, some, some numbers in outlying years that we think are important for being, bringing each of these projects to fruition. Uh, and that is the case there. But Seabview Avenue, I could tell you, we had another fantastic public meeting, um, you know, at the Walkbridge Office and, and we really had an engaged community that came out and, you know, we, we worked with a consultant earlier um, or later last week and just saw the amount of comments that came through, uh, for that. It, it was just unbelievable. Um, and Lou, to your point is really, you know, they, they get to, you know, we, it's not the one community meeting, but it's, it's actually how they were able to put up a system and, and collect, you know, information uh, that, that was ongoing. And we did the same with Wall Street. So we really are getting a tremendous amount of community feedback about redesigning our streets and making sure that our, our residents are participating in that process. Um, the next one is our safe routes to school. This is, you know, pretty much consistent with what the department has asked for in the past and what we're looking for in the future. Uh, so this is a $250,000 investment. Um, and we really have identified a couple of different opportunities. And I think if I was to ask the Board of Education, they would probably give me 7,000 more opportunities. Uh, but you, you, in short, we're all, you know, we're seeing that there are a lot of sidewalk gaps, you know, around Adams Avenue. There's also, you know, Marvin Street is void of sidewalks that, that are going up a hill. So we really see that those are two immediate opportunities, but we have again, on another longer list of, of opportunities to do there, but massive investment, you know, remaining with our kids, you know, and making sure they gets to, to school safely. Speaking of getting kids to school safely and keep them safely, the next one is a new item, uh, that is, that is on board and that is listed as the State, uh, Tracy School Improvements. Um, shortly after Garrett and I arrived, we got inundated and I think we remain inundated with calls from the neighborhood around Tracy School who complained that, you know, when, when, when it is PM, they can literally cannot get out of their driveway. And we went out there and we've seen it. We've restriped the street. We put in, uh, so, you know, some other, you know, traffic controls as we could. The reality is their queuing area for pickup is very small. Uh, and, uh, there, there isn't an easy fix without, you know, getting them to queue somewhere else. But the interesting thing that we, that we saw when we spent some time and we walked the school a number of times, um, you know, at, at both AM and PM, and we've had conversations with the Board of Education as well as the principal of the school. Uh, so we don't do anything in a vacuum. Um, but there's a field in the back, right? And one of the things that we thought about is what if we took that field and we mimicked the, we mimic the trail that's, that's exists behind City Hall, that we see people walk on 24 hours a day, nearly, right? What if we made that a, a path that they could walk around, but in few times a gate would open that a lot, that would allow vehicles to queue up back there and come out. So we would be able to take the majority of people that are queuing up on city streets and do that, uh, queue, having them queue up back, back there, it would leave, eliminate the problem that existing, you know, for the AM and PM pickup and drop off, but also create a value add to the community where they then have a place that you, you could teach your kid how to ride a bike because it'll be a flat surface. You can go for a walk um, and get a little exercise. So we think that there's a huge, huge, huge benefit to this. And this is about a $500,000 investment that, that we would, that we would make. And Lou, to your point, this is an easier one that we did design in-house. So we have, we have some designs uh, ready to go and we, we, we've worked with, uh, this. So this is, uh, you know, this is one that I hope that you will consider because I think that we have a lot of value for this. Um, moving along, uh, I talked before about the Wall Street Corridor Improvements. So we're looking for, uh, $500,000. We are advancing this, I think, at rapid speed, right? So we have had our second community participation meeting at the library. Um, and we really use this as a design charrette to hear from the community, like here's, here, here's where we are. We on target. What else do we need to do? What should we look at? What's working? What's not working? And I think we have a, we have a strong design that's really massively supported by the community. Um, and you, as such, we've also been able to secure 13.4 million dollars, uh, to, to, to start the design. We are working on a lots of application uh, for, for that before this, you know, this allows us to finish our design. We'll also cover some of the non-participating items that exist. Um, you know, when, when you do grants, uh, you know, and just also makes our ability to get these grants a little bit more competitive, showing an investment or some skin in the game from the city. So we think, uh, this is a, a really, you know, a, a minimal investment based on the scale of the project of, of how it's turning out. Um, but this will be, we will deliver with you, we promise, a massive transformation of the Wall Street area.
Jim, is this the 4.5 pending coming from the state?
So, so, um, so, so that is, so, so I'm sorry, okay. Um, so, um, that number has actually been updated since we actually, we did this, you know, having, so, um,
Okay.
So, you know, we're looking at now, so we're looking that, that in, in total, we've secured, um, you know, the, the nine million is, uh, 5.5 secured by Congressman Himes. Um, 3.5 secured by Senator Duff. Um, you know, it, we have funding secured by the Parking Authority, uh, for a reinvestment into the facade of the Yankee Doodle Garage. We have investments that the city has made, you know, working forth the design in total, uh, you know, and then also we have a 1.8 million dollar Lotsip Award for East Wall Street, which we're starting that project. So in total, that came to 3.4. At the time that we were looking at this, you know, when, when we did this, uh, 4.5, that 4.5, we have a meeting tomorrow, uh, may have, uh, you know, may have gotten itself into almost like the 6.75 number. So, um, it, so, so we're looking, that, that will be another, so in, again, in that one, under the 4.5, the, the reevaluation of everything that we've done to, to satisfy DOT in that, it's increased, you know, about $2 million, the, the cost of that grant, uh, but it'll still be covered. It, it's still be covered, covered of the grant, but we're looking now that that's going to be like six and a half to six and three quarter million dollars uh, that, that we're, that we're going to apply for through Lotsip. We got some preliminary approval. We had to answer about five or six questions, uh, for, for, uh, points of clarification and additional information. Uh, Garrett and I were finalizing that, uh, today. Uh, and, you know, and we'll ready for, we'll, we'll be ready for submission to West Cog, um, you know, within a week or two.
And so, thank you. I mean, it's a big project and that includes the intersection by the library with Mott Street and Belgian. And then does that include? But you mentioned the Yankee Doodle Garage. Does that include the facelift or whatever you want to call it there?
So that'll, that'll include the 3.13.4 is, is, is that? So that's included, yeah, that's included in that as well. Um, and then we also had a conversation with Norwalk Transit District about a reconfiguration of the hub there and funding that they had for the, for the shelters and really a conversation with them that, you know, the shelters sometimes don't really, those shelters don't really work well for them because, you know, they're, they're up so high that the, the transit rider gets wet, right? Um, so, so, so we're looking at how we could partner to, instead of moving the shelters that they don't really like, how we could partner in this and get a better shelter that's more respectful to our transit riders, um, keeping them safe, uh, and, and do that. So, so, you know, that, you know, that's, you know, that's going to be part of the equation too, that continued partnership with the transit district.
Okay. And two thoughts on that. One, I'd love it if you could share what the most popular design was that people voted for, for the garage. And then two, if you are talking to the transit people in that hub, I don't know how many years this goes back because we did put a significant investment in there and there's no bathrooms there. So if you have anything to say about it, put a bathroom in that, in that hub somewhere because it's a transportation changing point and people, you know, need to use the restroom. So I hope that somehow that could get in there.
Um, we did have a conversation with the transit district about how we think that that would, that would be a service that we should provide and how they might want to go about doing that. So we, we have entered that conversation and we'll certainly share with you the, the design that, that was chosen by the communities. It's varying shades of blue. So I think it's going to look really nice. So.
Oh, is it varying shades of blue?
Yep.
Okay, I voted.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So did a lot of people. So it was really pretty popular.
Great.
So the next one is just, this is every other year, the department puts in the the same request. Uh, in an outlying year, we had an increase to to seeing some cross, but this is, you know, our pavement markings and signage. Uh, you know, I think it's a, you know, so so this allows us, you know, to 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 remark our streets, to keep our crosswalks, uh, you know, freshly marked and safe. But also, you know, um, what we piloted uh a couple of weeks ago on Wall Street is a redesign of our street signs. Because we heard a lot of complaints about our street signs and they didn't really speak to the best of who we are. Uh, you know, let's just say it that way. So we we we've uh, we've worked with the redesign. We've worked with the the mayor on on what that would look like. Um, and we're piloting on Wall Street uh and uh we'll finish up. We have a one more sign to finish up, but. Uh, it'll be finished up soon. And when we do, we we will, we'll put a little uh news out on, you know, probably through social media on our Tuesday. Every Tuesday, we have dedicated for hashtag Transportation Tuesday. Uh, so we'll put it out there to to gather some more opinions on the signage. But uh, so far, things will are looking uh much better on uh on Wall Street. So we would want to, you know, further those signs out because there's not a lot of consistency with our signs today. So we were, we we created a design manual that really puts the consistency there, puts the hype, but how they're going to be installed. You know, so when so and the distance that goes in between. So there's a lot of work uh that that put in there to to making that better. So that's that, you know, that 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 stays there. Um, the next item is another new item, and this is a a one that we receive eight, we have received tremendous amount of comments from. Um, and that is East Avenue Corridor and Intersection Improvements. The plan for this in the concept that we per- that we are providing, proposing for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be design plans on East Avenue. Um, from Eversley all the way up to Cannon, including around the 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 town green, right? We have, you know, we we have complaints of high speeds. We have complaints of really uh an inability for pedestrians to safely cross the street. Uh, a lot, you know, not a lot of pedestrian piece of uh facilities that are that are there. And and, you know, not a really good feel, right? When you're, you know, pedestrian trying to walk, uh, you know, around our town green, right? So uh, we think that, you know, uh, if we, you know, being that, you know, the road handles a lot that it's pro- proximity to the highway. Uh, this is ultimately a great candidate for a grant. Uh, but these are really only great candidates for grants if we actually have some plans that we could show people that says, we're going to spend your grant, we're going to make a wise investment. I think that is really the success that we're seeing coming from Wall Street, the city's commitment to making some design changes out there. Uh, and are really, you know, working forward to 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 getting that. We think that this is another opportunity. Um, but I think the community would really like to see us work on uh some improvements around this corner as well, where we see, you know, heavily populated uh, you know, section of of town. The next one is um. The Norwalk River Valley Trail. Uh, so this year's request is for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, part of that is really going to cover what we're seeing, excuse me, as a grant opportunity coming uh forth for transportation. Um, alternative program. So I probably four or five years ago now, the city applied for a transportation. Uh, alternatives grant for the uh next section of the N R B T. So uh, it'll, it'll pick up uh Garrett, what's the street where it picks up? Broad Street, right?
Broad Street to the merit.
Yeah, Broad Street all the way to the merit. Um, and we got word from D O T a few weeks ago that we are next in line, right? So it's a federal grant opportunity uh and, you know, it's boarded one community at a time. And um, so they are anticipating that sometime within um twenty twenty three, we will receive a notice of award uh that we have that 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 project. So that will get us again, you know, with an N R B T all the way up to the uh the Mayor Parkway. So pretty exciting about that.
Jim, what is, what is holding up the completion of um the section up to Broad Street?
Um, so the 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 what's holding us up is a a design challenge that 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 uh, you know, that we're working through right now with the consultant. Um, uh, the for the boardwalk. So the boardwalk had a a bit of a a a little bit of a staff food. So there was a um, a sewer line that was not on any of the plants that we had. Uh, so when we started to do the excavation for the pilings for the boardwalk around that section, uh, that's when it uh it appeared. Uh, so uh, we, you know, we are, we're, we're just working on the last part of that. We should have something back from the consultant uh later this week. Uh, so our, you know, we're very anxious to open up that last leg.
And just so you know, in the book that we have Steve Puppin, maybe this is for you, the page says three hundred, it says two fifty and the cover sheet says three hundred. Um, for this item, Norwalk River Valley Trail.
I I believe, Tammy, if I'm not mistaken, I think what what we had is two hundred and fifty for the design of the trail. And I believe there is fifty thousand for construction um related to ongoing maintenance of the trail since um, we have several miles.
Combined it too. Got it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we combined one ask because it's it's in total it, but it it's separate.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the next one is a new one. Um, we put in a seventy five thousand dollar uh amount here to do it. So we, you know, D M P is responsible for um, streetlights. Um, however, we have never, the city has never made a a line item investment into streetlights before. We've actually, we've done them as a project of putting them up. But we've never really kept a line item in there to keep these at a state of good repair. This this bore its head this uh this past year when I was driving along on um West Avenue. And I saw a streetlight that was bent towards the road. Uh, we called the crews out there and what was happening, it was actually, it actually rusted from where the bolts are and was falling into the road. You know, so they're 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 aging. We've not taken an inventory of where they are. We actually had the crews, I have pictures, we had the crews have to, we we had some help with D P W. A couple of bucket trucks up there securing the pole to bring it down safely uh and then disconnecting the power. But we, you know, we don't have any funding to replace that streetlight, um, because we don't have a line item for this. Um, and um, you know, so we want to make sure that with this funding, we're getting an inventory of all of the streetlights that are the city's responsibility. Uh, that we do an assessment of our infrastructure out there and we make sure that we're proactively addressing these things and that they're not coming down because they rusted out. Um, so, you know, we would very much request that a uh, you know, we we begin a process of really, you know, uh, you know, putting investment into the city. Infrastructure uh regarding streetlights. We really think that this is important when we look at a safety factor. Not only safety from them falling down, but you're making sure that our streets are light uh or are well lit. Uh, is a safety factor, you know, a driving factor. It's a, it's it's a feeling good factor about where we are. So um, we think it's a minor investment into the amount that we have. Um, but I, if you were to ask me now, how many were you responsible for, Jim? We don't actually have a number because we don't have an inventory.
How does this, how does C L and P play into that?
So the, so so um, the streetlights are, so i- in many instances, the streetlights are municipality, right? Because you don't have to have them, right? You're, we're, we're paying for the electricity.
But they're on the pole.
But they're the, you know, if it, you know, so in in times where it's their pole, right? We would pay for the arm that goes out. Uh, in times that they're decorative pole, the city owns that whole decorative pole, whether it's a pedestrian level lighting. Or whether it's the 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 higher lighting, that's that's all a usually a city asset. Uh, in Sono, they have taken that asset as is in the taxing district and those those lights down in Sono are owned by the taxing district. But in other parts of the city, they're actually owned by you and the municipality.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Um, the next one uh again is a new item. It's a traffic data. It's sixty thousand dollars and allows us uh to to do two things. One, um, it, we have, you know, we we employ a traffic analyst. That traffic analyst is spending a tremendous amount of time working with us to help us create that Vision Zero uh that that we have. We look at, you know, we we're a constant conversation with the Police Department. We look at where the accidents are occurring. We look at ways uh to mitigate that. But we're also creating our own database that really analyzes the the data that's out there. We're looking for from some other partners, we're you're we're massaging that. We're able to get rapid acceleration, deceleration. We're looking at, you know, proactively addressing where the accidents are occurring, how the accidents are occurring. And what mitigation strategies we can put in place so that they don't happen again. Um, and so so this is allows us uh to to finalize that database that we are working on. But also, um, you know, in the traffic data, again, you know, not only do we not have an inventory of our streetlights, but. When I talked to you before about our street signage, we have no inventory of our street signage. So we don't know where this, wha- what street, what signs that that were intended to be on the street when there's a knockdown. We don't know the necessarily where where to replace it because there's not a database. So we want to formalize that database for street signs and we've been looking at it outside company to to assist us with that. Um, but uh, you know, that would be what that investment is for. Um, the the next item is for protected crosswalks, uh, thirty uh thirty five thousand dollar investment. This is really the R R F Bs that we're seeing, you know, we're getting a constant uh, you you're requests for more crossings. Uh, you know, we, people want to be able to cross the safer. I think what happened with the pandemic, it brought more people out of their house and into their streets to go for a walk, right? Because you're, if you're working from home or you just got tied up. And, you know, those requests to have safer roads have been, you know, you are constant for us. Uh, you know, this is a proven the strategy for implementing those are really a lower cost solution uh to make for, you know, safer roadways. Uh, we have, you know, uh, some, um, you know, I think identified in nearly every neighborhood uh across the city that could use this. So it's not a massive deployment, uh, but one that allows us to be responsive to uh residents that do it. Um, pedestrian crosswalk at forty Cross Street, right? So we've have um, you know, through our partnership with the redevelopment agency, they've created um another connection to the N R B T. Uh, that goes uh, you know, through Cross Street, but there's a, you know, so we, we've now uh in in, we have a a uh, you. Part of in back of Avalon, a a uh pathway that connects through the Norwalk River. And then act from Cross Street to the N R B T. You know, Brian was able to negotiate with the property owner, the ability for us to get an easement to go in there. So we have these two connecting pieces of a trail, but it actually had leaves you mid-block on Cross Street with no way to cross. And so we're looking for, you know, probably, you know, a hawk or or are you a pedestrian hybrid beacon? To allow people to safely cross the the you, the trail there. And we think that once we really open up that section of the N R B T, Lou, that, you know, that opportunity. Of people crossing there uh would be greater. Uh, and then it also is going to connect into the work that we're doing on Wall Street. So again, I think we have this connected network that's starting to really come together. Uh, so that that is what um, that investment is for. Um, the next one.
Question, sorry. Can you just talk about these protected crosswalks and how D P W likes them? Because people ask all the time, oh, I want a speed bump on my street to slow down the traffic. And protecting crosswalks are little humps. You can go faster over them than you can a speed bump. But what, what, how does, uh, you know, how do the other departments like these things?
So so we, everything we do is in conversation with D P W. We meet with Vanessa on a weekly basis and have since we, since we arrived here. We worked with her in combination to the race crosswalk that we added on Highland. Um, and and we add them where they make sense and we design them in a way that a plow will be able to to easily maneuver and 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 occupy it. We don't want to make sure, you know, like there is, a lot of it is about how we design it, right? And um, and and how we sign it and how we how we do it. So, but we are, the race crosswalk is one portion, the R F B is another, you know. But um, you know, I I think there is no complaints from D P W on the the design that 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 we have. Um, and 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 we think it's going to be working perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Hunt Street Sidewalks. So we have um, you know, so we uh. We are near the end of being able to get sidewalks on Ro- on on Rowatton. Um, uh, but we're also working um with designing sidewalks on which from Hunt all the way to Highland, right? There are some sidewalks there, um, but they are in. Uh, a state of disrepair, I think, in some instances. Um, and and we want to mimic the the quality of sidewalk that we installed on Highland. Um, so we got that there. So when we get sidewalks and this'll and the which sidewalks will occur um in this could, in this season. So you'll see that from, I think, in D P W uh when they come and talk to you, that that'll be on that. Um. And then, you know, so that'll bring sidewalks all the way down to to Hunt. So that, you know, this has been on the radar for for many, many moons. Uh, you know, that that connection there. And I think once we have a better connection, it's really going to to be, you know, more. So this is putting the funding requests in there uh for you for the sidewalks on Hunt Street.
And and it's not just the design.
Though this, so 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 this, this would be the construction.
This is actual construction.
Yep.
I'm so shocked. I can barely speak.
So that is the end of what we have for our requested, you know, of of capital expenditures for this year. Uh, we just put the 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 following items that fall after that are really outlier years, right? So what we really saw, we just wanted to put on your radar and and also talk to you about where we, where where our heads are at, right? When our collective heads, when we're talking to the community about where our next set of investments should come into. Now, this doesn't give a comprehensive list, but this just starts to say, you know, the the direction we want to go in. North Main Street. Next year, we're, we're, we're looking for some design improvements for North Main Street. We think that's a big opportunity out there, particularly with the redevelopment of the Webster Lot and is be going to really start to change the whole character. You know, this, you know, the the North Main Street section needs a little luck. Uh, and um, you know, I think we have some traffic eyeing measures that we can put in place, some beautification measures that we can put in place. And also identified in the Transportation Master Plan is really allowing your left-hand turns from North Main onto M L K. Um, because, you know, you have to go down and find a way to do a U-turn and get back. So that would be an outlying year for next year project. Uh, and then after that, we also believe that, you know, we are going to have, you know, Wall Street, you know, shining. That we're going to have to be forced to, you know, bring, put another little investment into Washington Street uh and and up that. But I think that'll be tied, you know, again, it'll be, uh, you know, start to re- redo the time for for such a busy uh retail corridor. Uh, your restaurant corridor uh that we uh, you look to to make investment there. Uh, then you'll see another outlying year, uh, Rowatton Village Improvements. You know, we really think that there, yeah, this, you know. There is a lot of talk in transportation these days that talks about a fifteen minute city, you're right. Um, and it's really about people wanting to do things within fifteen minutes of their home, whether it's work, whether it's play, whether it's going to to dinner, right? And we think that Norwalk is better positioned than any other community out there to make that happen based on our history of how we how we emerged and how we have a lot of village districts. And we really think that, you know, amplifying those village districts are going to be the thing that sets Norwalk apart from every other community. You know, so we have a grant opportunity out from Main Street. Um, yes, further up, not to North Main, Main Street. Um, then we have, you know, what's happening in Sono, what's happening in Wall Street, what's happening Rowatton. We really want to emphasize, you know, these, these uh, th- these, you know, village districts. And I really think that, you know, we can make the Rowatton Village so cute that every Hallmark movie will be wanting to be filmed there for very eternity. Um, so that's an outline year. And then last one is Cat Faster Beach Road Corridor Improvements. Again, we identified this in our Transportation Master Plan. We want to get rid of that highway that we installed in the middle of our, you know, residential neighborhood, right next to our school. Make a road that that's respectful to 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 the neighborhood, which it is, that gets a better multi-use path that goes down to the to the beach. Uh, that tree gets a tree line that makes it look beautiful. You know, you're coming to our best asset. But you drive there on fifty miles an hour because the road was designed for fifty miles an hour. We want to change that. So that's our budget. Sorry to take up so much time. Uh, Jackie, you are very happy that you stopped for lunch or dinner before here. Uh, but we, you know, Garrett and I are here to answer any questions that you have. So uh, ask away.
Anybody?
I had, I had my questions answered as I asked.
All right. Um, so again, the offer, you know, as as for Brian, it, you equally from us is there any time that you want us to come together, you know. Talk about plans, talk about where we are, talk about, you know, where our heads are at. We're, we're happy to to do that at any point in time. Thank you for your time. Uh, you do great work and it's an odd year and, you know, you are very much appreciated by by all of us here in the city. Also, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, have a good night.
Alright, good night. See you again. Okay, so then uh next up is the code enforcement.
I, I think we had Dana from Historical, Tammy, if you wanted.
Oh, yeah, okay.
She was very gracious to hop on when she wasn't expected.
That's fine. Alright, thank you. So um, then we'll go back to the uh Historic Commission and Dana Laird. Uh, I believe is on the board of the Historic Commission.
Yes.
Hi Dana.
I, um, I don't have any. Budgetary forms in front of me. I know we had one issue with paying uh for.
Dana, if I, if I could just interrupt, sorry. What if we say what we have in front of us and you could speak to it if you have information?
I actually don't have any um. Forms or anything in front of me right now.
That's okay. So for example, we, we have, um, you know, we heard about the Lockwood Matthews Mansion and the four-point-five million dollar request. The next thing that is on this uh summary page is Smith Street Buildings looking for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I can read you what it says, if that's helpful. And if you know of it, you can say, yes, I know about that, or no, I don't, and we won't, you know, we won't hold it against you.
Yeah, I know that's on our, on our uh radar, not, it's actually part of our system, so you could read that, that would be great.
Sure, and, and Steve has already posted the um outline, so you can follow along with us and then the attachment. Oh, I see. You have a visual.
Right, there it is. Yeah, so. You can read it yourself. I know you know how to read.
Yeah.
So this is it, the one sixty, complete interior walls, floor ceiling, pottery and jail exhibit installation.
Yeah, this has been ongoing, um. We had a very slow progress with the ramps going up to the Mill Hill. And um, yeah, the light was in there a few years ago and it was just gutted, so I know all this stuff does need to be done.
Okay, and would this be the last thing for the restoration of the Smith Street Buildings?
That I'm not entirely sure of.
Okay. Alright, that's okay then.
I don't believe so, just based on what's outlined below.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Looks like they're out five years with, with the post improvements for that.
Alright, well, we really only want Dana to speak to this year anyway, right?
Okay.
Okay, so then.
Next item is uh. ADA access at Mill Hill.
Yeah, but that's actually for twenty twenty-five, Lou, the three fifty ADA access.
Oh, you're quite right, you're quite right. Then it's the museum collection.
Right, Dana, eighty-five thousand for the museum collection conserve paintings and objects in the museum collection to allow for display.
Yes. Give me the money.
Last summer and they had a bunch of things out, so I guess you rotate the collection.
Right, I mean, I have only seen a tip of the iceberg of what we have, so.
Okay.
And it's all fragile.
Sure, alright, um, and then the next one is cemetery site work, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Ongoing restoration repairs for complete Pine Island Tombstone Conservation. I remember we talked about this last year.
Yeah, that, it's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, it just never ends. So there's the four cemeteries and Pine Island is the largest one.
Um, where's Pine Island located?
It is behind or kind of adjacent to Lockwood Matthews Mansion on Creston Street. Is its address.
Yep. Thank you.
And the uh, one of the trails does go through the cemetery. So we do have a lot more.
The Norwalk River Valley Trail goes through.
Yeah, so the, the western end, it does, it does, we've had a lot more visibility because of that. Um. And yeah, I guess a lot of things need to be done there, but again, it's just.
In the cemetery?
Yes, including stone walls and stuff.
Okay. Okay, and then the next one is. Lockwood House ADA uh education lecture space and museum, it doesn't actually line up. Training rooms, education rooms and basement, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know we had, we finally got the elevator in, so that would be our area to have that sort of activity. Happen.
Okay. And the Lockwood House is open to the public all the time, remote, I mean, it has set hours?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what those are at the top of my head. Um, I don't, Diane is. Chief cook and bottle washer, so. I know we have openings and I'm not sure if we have regular hours, though.
Okay. Alright, then the next one, it looks like uh WPA Murals, fifty thousand. Restore the Ben Franklin Auditorium Murals. I think this was on last year, too.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, yeah, those are the WPA murals that are sort of overlooked. And this has been on our radar for a while.
Yes.
They're, they're in poor, rather poor condition. I'm surprised the restoration can be done so inexpensively.
Well, thank goodness, um. Do, do you know, Dana, does the city have, I mean, we have. In that inventory, maybe we don't have an inventory of all the WPA things. I mean, one of our previous speakers was asking um for a grant to. Um, create an inventory of all the art in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And I would hope that the WPA murals were already. Uh.
Well, I, I bet Mr. Shulman has a good idea of what.
Yeah, they're all pretty, pretty well inventoried, again, in, in the book that the uh Transit District. Um, uh, did, now it's probably close ten years ago.
Mm-hmm.
But it locates each of uh, each of them. And I think the two at Ben Franklin are still uh attached uh to the wall. Whereas all the others have been taken off uh and have been framed. Um. But these are actually part of the architecture of that space. Uh, over doors, things like that.
Mm-hmm, kind of like the murals in City Hall, I mean, in the concert hall at City Hall.
Right.
Um, I do know that they're, um, in speaking with David Westmoreland, I do know that. The Historical um Society had done a historical inventory on some pieces of art. And he was looking to continue to update that. Um, and the previous um presentation with Sabrina um Gadeski talking about the art inventory. We had been working with David pretty closely to understand what that historical art inventory looked like. So that we weren't duplicating work or overlapping work, but trying to grow off of what they had already um collected. So I do know that some of that work is done, it's not one hundred percent complete. Um, and then just thinking about that other um initiative that Sabrina was talking about, I know that it'll grow up. Her work will grow off of that and incorporate both historical and non-historical.
Okay. Well.
And I don't know whether the uh, there's something at the post office on Washington Street, I don't know if that's part of our purview, but.
Unfortunately, it isn't, uh, there. It, there's WPA art at both post offices, uh, both the main um office on Beldon. Uh, and uh, the uh south, you can't really see the ones in South Norwalk, they're in the office. The other ones, however, are there for public view. Um, and nothing has been done, to the best of my knowledge, with either of those collections. Uh, to clean or maintain them.
Right. Yeah, I was able to be, see the one on Washington Street with a little tour we went on with them.
I think a couple of years back, um, it was requested for capital buzz budget to have them appraised. Does anybody else remember anything about that? No.
I remember discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, me too. Okay, alright, well Dana, um, thank you very much for um hopping in and taking us down with this. Um.
Thank you for working with me.
You're welcome. Um, do the commissioners feel that we've had enough explanation? Or do we want to have somebody else um come on Thursday?
I think it's adequate.
Okay, JJ.
I believe. Will Da- will David be back by Thursday?
I don't know. Um, David won't be back by Thursday, but I can try to get David on the phone and have him provide um. A description or fill in some of the blanks if you want, and then I can come on Thursday and speak to some of the items if you'd like that.
I mean, it's in time for me, everybody else seems to be okay without it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Memo would be fine, you know, just going into a little bit more depth. I think it's out of.
Alright then, um, moving on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So then the next one is uh code enforcement. And that is.
And thank you to Dana for jumping on last second. Um, I know that the P D staff reached out to her, so thank you for doing that, Dana.
You're welcome.
Yep, thanks Dana. Alright, so code enforcement is its own tab, um, without any letter or number. After planning and zoning.
Yep, so I can speak to this, um. The building in code enforcement is actually built Ireland's department, um, and I told Bill that I would speak to this item for him. Um, we took on a contract um with meticulous landscaping from the redevelopment agency. When we per, when we um restructured the city in twenty eighteen. And the meticulous landkeep landscaping contract was associated to the Neighborhood Improvement Office. Um, which is the office that David Shockley heads for us, uh, and Bill's department. And um, at that point in time, the contract was ending uh last year. So we rewrote the RFP to be a little bit more inclusive of some of our um public areas in the urban core. That um require gardening and require upkeep um in a landscaping uh function or landscaping. Um, type of work. And uh, we rebid that contract and meticulous one. So they're in the first year of a three-year contract that has two one-year options. Um, when we rewrote the scope for the work for the RFP, we included um. Klondike Park and the Art Park, we also included um the medians along the MLK Corridor. And also um some other areas in and around the urban core that uh were not necessarily being uh kept up. Like we'd like them to. Um, and in addition to that, we also um worked with uh meticulous and uh Neighborhood Improvement. To um address the uh holiday decorations that are installed along Washington and also along Wall Street. Which I think we had done here in Norwalk many moons ago, and then I think we stopped doing that for a number of years. And we wanted to pick that up for the holiday season. So the contract that we currently have with meticulous, as I said, it's in its first year, um, three years with two one-year options. The contract is a total of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, it's not to go over one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the one hundred and fifty thousand that you see here is for that landscaping contract. The contract with meticulous itself is um totaled at one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that includes all of the labor, um, as well as the materials that are used to upkeep all of the uh urban core areas that I had mentioned. Um, and we can get you um the scope if, for background, if you're interested in that. But in addition to that, it also covers um the holiday decorations. And then in addition, we pull um a little bit of funding from David Shockley's operating budget from the Neighborhood Improvement. Um, operating budget for the spring um plantings that go in along Washington and Wall Street. So um, it's another one of those items that could potentially be an operating cost. As opposed to a capital cost, because it is again, year over year, knowing that we have a three-year contract with them with the two one-year. Um, renewal, uh, renewal options, but um, we've always kept it in the capital budget. And so that is what um this item represents.
Jessica, I'm just a little confused. You mentioned one eighty, then you mentioned one twenty-eight and your request is for one fifty. Yep, are we paying for the contract in every year meticulous gets one eight or one twenty-eight from somewhere else? Or is it from this one fifty?
So we, so we spend this complete one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars goes to meticulous directly. The other um remaining goes to holiday decorations.
Okay.
And um, the remainder goes from Neighborhood Improvement. So the contract with meticulous is up, is capped at one hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. But the actual contract for their work is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. The difference between the one eighty and the one twenty-eight, that sixty-two thousand is the um. Is the cost of the materials that we use to do the plantings, do the urns and do the holiday decorations.
And this isn't something that the DPW would do?
No, this has not been something that DPW has handled.
Okay, thank you.
Um, hey, there, there seems to be some duplication. Um, when, when we first opened up the present, the presentation, we did talk about holiday decoration and. Uh festivities, is this an overlap?
It's not an overlap, we've used um this, we've used um some of the funding. In some cases, what we've done is used a couple of different accounts to be able to cover the cost of holiday decorations. I think one of the things that you heard about was the special events that we were talking about, which is um. So that in itself is a different, would be a different fund. The, the funding here, that's the one hundred and fifty thousand, that goes to the hanging baskets, the wreaths. Um, it goes to the garland that goes around the street poles and it goes to the lights that are strung along Washington North and South Main. It also goes to the large urns that are planted um in and around Wall Street and Washington. So that is attached to this particular contract. The um holiday decorations that Sabrina was speaking about for the special events refer to that thirty-five foot holiday tree. Um, the menorah that was out at Fifty Washington, the tree that was put in Wall Street. And so um more of those items that we actually rent um for the holidays to be able to have them. They actually come um and install the tree and then they take the tree down and take it away. So a little, they don't overlap, although we use the same terminology for them.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you for the clarification. Anybody else have questions for Jessica? Nope. Alright, thank you, Jessica. Thank you, um, you're welcome. Uh, so then it uh economic and community development.
Yep, so we'll be talking about this as well, um. And I believe there actually is a line item that is missing from your sheet versus the sheet that I have. Um, I'm not sure if it was actually in the library, you just look.
Actually, I don't have anything under my economic development tab. Do you guys have any papers in yours? Darius or JJ or Lou in your book?
Under code enforcement, uh, I only have two pages.
Right.
Alright, so economic, economic community development, um, I have the same outline that Steve has posted. And then I have the summary page.
Oh, okay, mine's just missing maybe. I'll look under.
Yeah, no, I found it, okay.
Yeah, I actually have, yeah, I have two items on here, um. Oh, here it is, actually, Steve just found it. Yep, this is it.
Okay.
Okay, great. Um, so the um, the Small Business Main Street Program is a program that we um started uh two years ago. And as you know, um, you know, Economic Community Development started for. Four years ago now, three and a half years ago, four years ago. Um, and we had, we didn't have any economic development, business development uh programs in place. So this is the very first one that we introduced, um, it was two years ago on November the third. Um, or November the first, actually, because the two-year anniversary of this, we announced the opening of the Business Development Center. Um, the Small Business Main Street Program is meant to be programming for um streetscape improvements. And for businesses um that, and for business supports. Um, an example of this is the storefront improvement program. The storefront improvement program is a program where we um encourage store owners to be able to make improvements to their storefronts. Like Costa Jewelry, um, also Cafe Aroma, um, we also have a few um. Stores down in the Washington area as well and a few up on Main Ave. And the idea here is that it's. And the idea here is that it's a match grant where the the store store owner or the business owner puts in a certain amount of funding. And we match that funding in order for them to be doing storefront improvements. We really want to be able to support folks making improvements along the main streets to be able to encourage. People pedestrian walking and obviously the work that Jim and his team is doing and create that vibe and that energy in our urban areas. The other thing that we've done with this funding in the past is support the purchase of garbage cans. So again, trying to support DPW's work. And you know, one of the things we did is we bought twenty-four sets of garbage cans, recycling bins that again were put along Washington and Wall Street. We were able to take the old cast iron garbage cans that were originally put there and we were able to put them in Whistleville along Ely Avenue. And spread the garbage cans a little bit in different areas. The other thing that this program is paid for, if you notice, when you drive through the neighborhoods now, you see the banners, you see SoNo or Whistleville. Wall Street and the MLK banners, and we've used this program to be able to do that as well. So when we think of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what we're focused on is streetscape improvements. Oh, in the past, we've also used seventy-five thousand dollars. Of this. To do the COVID business support program, which was the first phase of COVID business support and assistance that we did in the city. So thinking about additional street cans, thinking about working with T N P, the Neighborhood Improvement Team and also the Arts Commission. On a functional art program which will support artists decorating benches and picnic tables that we can place around the city. Working with T N P and the Neighborhood Improvement to be able to take benches and place them along the water and along the Norwalk River Valley Trail as well as doing. Natural plantings like pollinator gardens along the NRVT and helping to make those transitions happen. Again, a portion of this was used for some holiday decorations, so we didn't use the complete funds from the Neighborhood Improvement. We used a split between this particular funding pot and the other funding pot. And then what we hope to do this year is. Support events. So in our operating budget, we have a position that we have yet to fill, which is called a special event coordinator. And the special event coordinator will take on. The funding that Sabrina talked about, which is the the holiday events and the Halloween event and also some spring events in the farmers markets. But we'd like to be able to use this one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support. Musicians playing in the urban core, we'd like to be able to have different programming that's going on in the urban core on Fridays and Saturdays. Thinking about how to celebrate First Friday and First Saturday as Sabrina was talking about. And so using these funds to be able to support those businesses in a meaningful way. The way in which we program.
Yeah. If I may. When you talk about buying new garbage receptacles and moving the old ones to another location. Does that have any financial implications for the budget of DPW?
No, it does not.
Well, no, somebody has to pick up the cans, so maybe not like city carding or whoever picks up the trash.
Yeah, so we were able to work with city carding to be able to pick up the additional trash cans, but there was no, there was no impact on the operating budget. From our discussions with them to be able to pick up those additional bins.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's not to say that that wouldn't increase over time if we were to continuously put out garbage bins. I think there's probably a tipping point there.
No pun intended. The, is there any opportunity for sponsorships of these musicians, you know? Advertising, that sort of thing, rather than the city paying. For this and and are you looking, you said a special events coordinator? Are you looking to hire a new position?
And with this. Yep, so the special, yep, so the special event coordinator would be a new position and that position would be funded for the first couple of years out of ARPA. Before it would be funded out out of the operating fund, so that was a position that we have had. That was a position that we actually have approval for this current fiscal year and we posted. We actually posted it as an RFP and we didn't, we got responses, but the responses were for a lot more money than what we had available. And they were also for larger events like the Alive at Five that Stanford holds, which is not. It would be great to eventually get there, but we were looking for something that was more community neighborhood activated activation as opposed to a large event. That would bring in sort of thousands of people from outside of the city of Norwalk, so a little bit of a different goal there. We realized that with the RFP being posted that we were not able to, that we weren't able to do that. And I should say that originally, we started with the idea that we would bring in an event, a special event coordinator, but we switched to an RFP. Because we thought that maybe a larger company might have. A suite of events that were already available, that they already had programmed out and that we might be able to pick and choose those events and instead of recreating the wheel. So that was the idea there, but that position actually exists today in in this current funding. In this current funding for operating and the the job posting should actually be posted. We had shared it with HR a couple of weeks ago. And then the other, I'm sorry, Tammy, your other question was related to.
Oh, well, I mean, is there advertising opportunity to pay these musicians rather than coming out of?
Yep.
Sort of taxpayer fund here.
Yeah, so I think, so I'm glad you asked this question because it's something that I really struggle with. And I struggle with it because economic community development. You know, includes planning and zoning and building and code enforcement, transportation, mobility, parking and also business development and tourism. And I struggle with it because a lot of the applications in which you see as planning and zoning commission. And also a lot of the applications that come through the building and code department are from. Our partners that we may potentially go and seek sponsorship from, and there could potentially be the optics of a conflict of interest in some way. And I struggle with, I struggle with it a little bit, knowing that. We do want sponsorship and we do want to move forward with sponsorship, but a lot of the partners in which we work with are our partners that are. Moving locations from one office to another office where they're submitting building and code, you know, requests for building and code permits or even. Developers that are currently developing and have apartments in the pipeline, so. So yes, I would love to go out and get sponsorships, but I've. But we've held back in doing so just because we want to be sure that there is no conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. I mean, a sponsorship can be small or it could be large, you know, a big bank, a big developer, but it could also be grassroots. Businesses or even people in the neighborhood that want these kind of, you know, outdoor entertainment or whatever it is you're. Whatever you're planning. As a community event or maybe a community group, you know?
I think it would be great to be able to have, what we've encouraged in the past, and I think what would be great to have is. For example, like a Spinnaker and a TD Rich work with. You know, Mike DeScala along with the preferred developer for Webster Lot, and if they were to all come together and. You know, make that, you know, pull together and and be the spine for that community group and thinking about how to change. The way in which the neighborhood. You know, what the neighborhood offering has, and I think that we've talked a lot about a. A bid and a lot about an SSD in what, you know, the Special Service District or a Business Improvement District. In the city of Norwalk and we talked a lot about it in Washington in particular and, you know, I think that there are a number of players. Who are interested in doing that, and I think that's where your, you know, I think that's part, I think if we were to think of sponsorship. We should probably be thinking in that direction where we're trying to establish a group that functions like that, that then has the responsibility for doing these types of things. Things at the neighborhood level.
Darius, you have your hand up for some time.
Yes, I did. You know, I, I, without cosigning one thing or another, because we are still in the midst of the budget process. I do believe that a. A coordinator of special events would prove highly useful because that person could tackle some of the things that. You, Tammy, and Jessica have discussed, especially around. Whether or not we would want to look into sponsorship opportunities. You know, there could be a policy that is put in place to where there there is a balance instituted, you know, when it comes to political contribution. A lobbyist may not be able to donate. And so if there is some type of. Policy that we have in place, I think we could strike that right. And then I did have a last question in terms of ARPA funds. Did you have an idea or a ballpark of how much is?
Of how much is, sorry, what did you say?
Unallocated.
Oh, unallocated for ARPA funds? We have. So the city received thirty-nine point three million, eight point seven million was committed to economic community development. And we've spent down about one point three specific to small business and we have about three point one million. Still left to go. Some of the other funding that is allocated to economic community development is actually for. The Climate Action Plan, there's money allocated for housing, an affordable housing plan. We have a contract being signed for a tree canopy and a tree assessment. There's funding allocated for tree planting as well, and then there are a few positions like the special event coordinator. We also. Covered one position, which is the Kiva Capital Asset Manager, so we established a Kiva hub here in the city of Norwalk, which offers. Between one and fifteen thousand dollars to small businesses and entrepreneurs and able to get enable that to be able to get started. And it's a no fee, no interest loan, so to be able to do that with the National League of Cities, we were required to hire that position. Position, so I don't have right off the top of my head what is unallocated. I think for our eight point seven million, everything is allocated. It hasn't all been spent down as of yet, the eight point seven million, but it's all been allocated and went through. The Economic Community Development Committee went through the Finance Committee and also went through Common Council. What is unallocated for ARPA, any of the drawdown that happens needs Common Council approval before any additional. You know, any ARPA funds that are unallocated can be drawn down.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica and Darius. I'm sorry if I didn't see your hand being raised. Sorry.
Nope, we've all had a busy day.
Okay, all right, so Jessica, is there anything else that you?
No, just the main library expansion project. Obviously, we've been talking about that for the last couple of years and we keep pushing it out and so we continue to work on that. We continue to be optimistic that. We do want to expand the library. The twenty-five million assumes a four hundred dollar square foot renovation and expansion. Right now, the library is forty-seven thousand square feet, so that would give us around between twelve and fifteen thousand square feet addition expansion. So, you know, we're excited about that and then, of course. Steve has still has to present, but you know, the the team that I work with each and every day presented to you tonight. And obviously Steve's work is yet to come, but I just, you know, I couldn't be prouder of the team and all the work that they're doing and just the the number of projects that. That we're heading up and this is the capital budget, but we also have again that eight point seven million in ARPA funding and some funding for. From the MLK corridor project as well, so you know, it just, it's really great to, it's nice to be able to see all the team members present like this. To you because it's great to be able to see all the work that they're doing, so I'll I'll leave my comments at that, but thank you so much for taking the time.
You're welcome. A quick question about the library. About five years ago, I guess, Connecticut Public TV was thinking about, you know, joining the building next door. Next door, is that? In this.
Yeah, so so that was, that was definitely a discussion of a couple of years ago, right at the point in time where we were meeting them to allocate space. Or understand what kind of space they needed. They actually changed leadership and we haven't heard again from them or we've heard very little from them. Very little from them since then, so I'm not exactly sure where they're at with their thoughts on. Wanting to expand or wanting to relocate. We will reach out to them as we talk through. You know, as we talk through. And you know, I think the other thing that we're thinking about for the library expansion project is that that the Norwalk Business Development Center is at Three-Belden. And so, you know, I heard Sherelle talking a little bit about a business center at the library and how to, and so we've been talking very closely with Sherelle. And Moynonor, who is the president of the library and also Patsy Brasha, who presented the Lockwood Matthews item tonight. She's the vice chair. We've been talking to them really closely about potentially being able to marry those two efforts as well, so. Don't have a very good, you know, don't have a comprehensive update on the broadcasting in particular, but but I do know they have changed leadership. Since we've been working with them.
Okay, thank you for that update. All right, then I guess we're on to last but not least. Planning and zoning.
Sure, and the first item is a feasibility study related to the Norton property. Probably recall, I believe. Mister Williams was one of the commission members who did request that we consider looking at that sooner rather than later. This kind of stemmed from the industrial zone study where the Norton property, as you know, is a pretty unique animal. It's kind of, you know, situated in a location in between railroad tracks and the highway. And it's really only accessible through residential streets, so that's kind of led to one of the reasons why it's been kind of in its stagnant state for some time. So we talked about, you know, looking at a potential feasibility study of what we could do on the site based on the current constraints. So that's what that fifty thousand dollar request would go for. Okay, and the second item. Is related to the update of the zoning regulations with the idea being that the city has a product now called general code. If you go online, that's like where all the ordinances are. It's just kind of like a software management. Program. They have a newer program in response to some changes that what's happening like, you know, with zoning codes, for example. With the form-based codes and the graphic representations. With the idea being that they'll take our code and they'll. Put it into a map-based format, so somebody can come in similar to what we have with our GIS right now, where somebody can come in, put in their property address. And all the relevant information related to their property would pop up there in terms of the zoning, what you can do on the property, etc. Kind of like a simplified version of what you can do, maybe a little bit more user-friendly for the general public. We would still maintain, obviously, the, you know. Complete document. If somebody wanted to do that, that would be probably in a PDF format, but the the idea that this would be kind of a companion piece to that. Where someone could look at it in a more simple format and and, you know, probably gain the information that they need for their property without having to go through. Having to go through that, the large document to to go through. So that's kind of what we'd like to do once the regulations are finalized and hand that over to the. Consultant team that would do that. There's two components to that. One is the kind of transformation or transition from our. Code to their system and then there's ongoing maintenance after that, because obviously we'll be making changes down the road and they have to provide updates. And continue to service the product.
And Steve, that can all be done for twenty-eight thousand dollars?
Right, yeah, and then there'll be, there'll be ongoing operational costs after that, but these would be the upfront on the capital.
Interesting. Do you have experience with this somewhere else or is this sort of a new product?
Um, it's newer for general code. There are a couple of other mapping products out there. There's another one we looked at, which. The price escalates quite a bit and the. Part of that. Is it, it's more, I think, more geared towards larger cities than what Norwalk is, like Miami was using it, Chicago, and I was like, well, seemed like a little bit of overkill. Overkill, because it's almost like if you think about like when New York City does rezoning and they rezone like the entire east side, for example, that. We're not kind of at that stage where we're doing things, so it didn't seem to fit for our scale. Something else, though, that's not in, you know, obviously in this budget, but. I'm not sure if you guys saw the. GIS folks as part of the IT request or is that on Thursday and I'm not sure what you saw yet or not.
I believe IT came before us last.
They have, one of the items they have in their budget is for software to upgrade the GIS, which would be something really directly. That the planning and zoning department would be using, probably would be the principal user and that software, just giving them a plug for your deliberations down the road. Is that they'll, that's kind of like taking our code and letting us actually build. Like you've seen some diagrams where, if you recall, the. Merit approval where they did those block diagrams where they can kind of show you how big the buildings will be and how that'll fit into the streetscape. We'll be able to do a lot of that ourselves with this software, so hopefully you guys will consider that as part of your deliberations.
And so this would be accessible on the city website to people?
Yes, this general code map link would be, yes, that's the idea.
Okay, so they wouldn't, so it would eliminate perhaps people having. Okay, so they wouldn't, so it would eliminate perhaps people having to come into the Planning and Zoning Office if they're looking for something?
Oh, for sure. We, we, obviously, we, we'd love to get, uh, you know, a- as well as, you know, the other thing that we've been talking about for a long time is digitizing all our historic documents. So we would, the idea is we, we're going to marry all these different components. And that way, you could go on, really have a one-stop shop where you could punch in the address. All the old records would appear, all the old permits, files, everything associated with that property, as well as what the current rules are related to your property.
Interesting.
That's the grand vision.
Yeah, okay, so the little step was in the tax assessor's office that during the pandemic, they finally put the field cards online. So anybody can go to the city website and get the field card for a property. You just have to go in person and pay a dollar. So, progress. There you go.
Yes.
It's great. I mean, such a great thing. Okay, that's all you have?
That's it.
That's it. Wow. Okay. Um, so, uh, do any of our commissioners have any thoughts, questions, things that they want to share?
Uh, just thank you, Jessica, uh, Steve and Dana for all your time and coming to our city.
Right, thank you.
And you guys are back at it Thursday night.
Right.
Yes, right. The big one. Do we, um, yeah, we have that. We have the agenda for that one as well. Right?
Yeah, we have.
Do we have, do we have a date for, um, discussion of the budget?
I thought it was, um, the eighth I saw, but I don't know. I'll, I'll double check with Brian if that was a confirmed date or that was like a hold date. So the idea is you do have to have your pub, I think the fifteenth of February is the actual, uh, public hearing on the capital budget for you guys. And then you have to get the report to the mayor, I think, sometime like the first week in March. So that'll be the two phases that happen after you guys do your deliberations.
Right.
Yeah, so it's most likely the eighth, or we would probably need to have one, a special meeting. But we have fifteen.
Yeah, the, the eighth is, uh, yeah, you, you need to do it before the fifteenth. So if the eighth is good for you, I'll confirm with Brian tomorrow. We can get that set up if it's not already set up. If, if that eighth doesn't work, uh, let us know as soon as possible and we'll work on the second.
Right, February eighth, right? What time?
Yeah, I, that's up to you. We can.
Oh, all right. So Steve, the rest of the process is, once we hear, um, from the other departments, then am I supposed to recap this for the rest of the planning and zoning folks?
So at your, uh, when you do that second meeting, the February eighth, we'll call it the February eighth meeting for now, you'll need to go back through, um, the, the, the capital request by all the departments. You don't have to go through, you can handle that however you want to do it, but you just need to, if there are ones that you feel, you know, the easiest example is if you feel that the request is not consistent with the P O C D, then you need to indicate that so we can, uh, forward that information to the mayor. Um, the other thing we did last year as well was if you had certain projects that you wanted to highlight or you felt were partic- particularly strong in, in what your opinion, consistent and would further the P O C D, you should highlight those as well and those will get forwarded to the mayor in that fashion.
And is, um, um, Henry Dashowitz going to review any of this? Like in the past, the Planning Commission, he did that, but I don't, I don't think he did last year.
No, no, that component's taken out just because you guys aren't looking at the, the dollar amount that is requested, that, that portion of it, the, the actual, you, in the past, you guys had actually put together a budget. This time you're just making, looking at the items requested and, and looking at them for consistency with the P O C D. So that piece of it is, is not in your purview.
Okay, right. No, no, no numbers, really.
Yeah, instead of crafting, you're just making a recommendation as a commission, right?
Correct. You're, you're kind of screening, in one sense, you're kind of screening the request to make sure that they're, they line up with the P O C D. And I mean, you could also look at it and, and a lot of them, people can find a, uh, some kind of rationale within the P O C D. But I think, you, you know, if somebody has a really outrageous request, you, you'll be able to flag that pretty easily, I think.
Okay. Um, well then, does anybody else have anything to add or say or ask? No. All right, Jessica, you just hanging out for fun?
Oh, yeah, yep. Just, you know, I'm committed to you guys, sticky. I'm not gonna leave four mi- four minutes before you end the meeting.
Okay, well, and we don't have a, a timeframe to end. So, um, I guess if nobody else has any other questions or comments or whatever, then we will end the meeting. It's not a, we don't need a vote to do it because this is not a, a votable thing. Right.
Sounds good. Sounds like we're done.
Thanks for taking the time, everybody.
Right, Thursday, I guess. Okay, bye.